Good evening. I'd like to call this September 7, 2022, Brookline Vermont regular select board meeting to order. The time is 6:36 PM. President of the room, our select board member, Stan Noga, Bruce Mello, and myself, Dr. Maggio. In the audience, we have our back TV rep Josh Morelli. We have Mark Phillips, our road supervisor, and Win Clark here as he has submitted a bid for one of our projects. Are there any changes to the agenda that the selectmen would like to see changed, modified at this time?
There are a number of small issues, but I can incorporate them into my grants scenario.
Okay. Okay, so no major changes at this time. Right now, we're going to take a look at and review the minutes. We tabled the minute review for the August 3 meeting because I hadn't read them, but I have now. So I'm going to go over the August 3, 2022 minutes at this time. Any changes on page 1 of 5? Stan?
Yes, under E, review, approve. It's not waste policy. It's local hazard mitigation plan.
And in the same sentence, you got duh duh. I think it's the same sentence.
Can you repeat that, please?
Okay, so this back.
Yes, on E, page 1 of the August 3 minutes, the item under letter E is an elephant. The word waste and policy should be removed and replaced, and the sentence presented as follows. Review, approve, local hazard mitigation plan.
Oh, that was on the agenda. I got it.
Well, unfortunately, there was a plan we were talking about as opposed to a policy.
So below that, in the sentence, it'll say, probably referring to the Westminster hazardous waste policy, is that?
That, that word in the second sentence ought to also be plan instead of policy. Because there was a plan submitted to Wyndham Regional that was being discussed and that Westminster had sent us. So I, you caught something I didn't.
So their plan is called the Westminster hazardous waste plan?
Correct.
Okay.
They may have a separate policy, but what we had been engaged with and asked by Wyndham Regional to review, as well as Westminster, was their has, local hazard mitigation plan.
And it says duh twice. So referring to the Westminster hazardous waste plan is now what it says.
Well, it should be again hazard mitigation plan. Westminster hazardous. Yeah.
You got the duh duh.
An actual local, like it is in the title, local hazard mitigation plan.
Is that the same sentence you have, duh duh?
So I'll just say, I suggest possibly referring to Westminster's plan. And just let that name.
Yeah. Yeah, that refers back to the title. That's a, that's a good idea, Peter.
Okay, so be it.
And, and Mr. Mello has pointed out the fact that in the second line of number E, there's two Vs, T A Gs, so one can be.
Yes, I just mentioned that. I nailed them.
Okay.
I got something else I'm thinking. Here at the top of the RFP, the heart is not H A R T, it's H A R T E. Page 1.
Okay.
Okay, which E are we talking about here?
Okay, under RFP discussion for electrical needs for heat pump installation, the gentleman's name is Mr. Hart, H A R T E.
Oh, got it. Okay, dope.
Anything on page 2 or 5?
No. Nope.
Anything on page 3 or 5?
Yes.
Page 3 or 5, Mr. Noga?
Well, let's see here.
I just need a few words.
Uh, this is one of those where I could have goofed in my statement, but under the highways, where the paragraph begins, after the word subsequent in line 1, I should have said, and I didn't say, if I didn't say it, then I'm wrong in telling you, but I had written in here after reviewing it, the word potential increases.
Oh.
And, and after, and after the word increases, I think you can scratch out the word 2 and insert the word approximately 403132, because we, we have no way of knowing what the actual number is, and I more than likely said about or approximately. So I think that would, that would take away the aspect of me saying it's definitively that amount.
Do we need to put an amount there? Why don't we just say potential increases? Of which?
No, I think we need the amount.
There's a reason that probably it's not obvious, but that dollar amount should be there.
All right, a potential increases to 403, et cetera, or of 403, et cetera?
Potential increase of approximately 403.
Of 403132.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not right either. Now I'm thinking about it.
You want to be too approximately.
It should say approximately up to, approximately up to, or up to approximately 403132.
Okay.
Because the increase itself is not 403,000. The end resulting number, because of potential and likely potential increases, ends up being 403132.
Right, so potential increases up to approximately.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on page 3?
Uh, yes, I think though. I believe. Uh, I'm not gonna, I don't know another one. I'm not even bothered. One of them. I, I can't read my own writing here, and I'm, I'm looking at E. This Maggio discussed the deputy health officer appointment and notifying the state. There was discussion of the process of appointment and the possibility that the previous health officer was still in office.
David did not officially resign.
Okay, okay, then, then, then I got, I'll cancel that correction as well. There was something in my mind that I needed to get to, but I, it's apparently so insignificant that I can't recall what it is at the moment. Sorry.
Okay.
Anything else, anything else on page 3? Now we'll move to page 4. Bruce, you have a question on page 4?
At the top of the page, you hurt my feelings. Your Brookline's not capitalized.
Oh, first sentence from Brookline as requested, just capitalization.
That's all.
Anything else on page 4?
Yes, under Peter Meyer, halfway down the page, where we were talking about a mode area, if you could cross out the area and put mode BMH1 without notification.
Okay.
And then down below under communications, the word, the sentence that starts out with Mr. Noga, discuss sources of town website domain information.
Town, website, domain. Okay.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Anything on page 5? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from August 3 as amended, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to now.
No, I'm sorry, but I, I lost the who, who moved and who seconded.
Oh, okay. I made a motion to approve the minutes as amended. May I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Stan. Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended for August 3, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. At this time, I'd like to review the minutes from the August 17 regular select board meeting. Any changes on page 1 of 6? I have one. Under new business, opening the RFP bids, it says there was a discussion of, there was discussion, and it should say $7,000 increase, not 7.00, 7,000 dollar increase.
Oh, it needs a comma and not a period. Got it. Good night.
Correct.
Got to move it over.
Great. And I would also like to amend number, letter V, open the RFP bids where I said there was no sand sample. The sample was provided. It was found after the meeting on the desk, so. Sample provided. Any other changes on page 1 other than the 2 that I've pointed out? Any changes on page 2 of 6?
Yes.
Stan?
Uh, under old business A, ARBA, uh, the third paragraph down, it starts with Ms. Maggio noted research on other needs for ARBA funds. And the next several words, 27,000 for highway. We could insert between highway and salaries, retention. So it's highway retention salaries.
Okay.
And then on the next line, uh, there was reference to an ARBA rebate.
Yep.
And I'm not sure what, who, where that came from, but ARBA does not indicate or give rebates. There must have been another program where rebates are anticipated.
Green Mountain Power or, or did Key Efficiency Vermont?
Uh, Green Mountain Power for 97,000 bucks.
Green Mountain Power rebate, GMP.
GMP.
So cross out and put GMP.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
And then fourth paragraph from the bottom. Uh, Mr. Noga discussed the original loan and payment schedule. The word loan is to be crossed out and replaced with the word bond, B O N D.
Got it. Original bond and payment schedule.
Thank you.
Now, from your speaking, it sounds like you want a struck out version. I have not been striking anything out. Would you like the thing to say loan with a strikeout?
Well, the word loan, if it was said, was completely an error, and, and I usually, so I don't know I actually used the word loan. If I did, it's incorrect, but I should have and most likely would have used the word bond, B O N D, because of.
Okay.
Yep.
I, well, I usually, I have never been asked to put a struck out word in anything, so we'll just do what we always do and correct it.
I, that's what I'm asking you to do. When I say strike loan, what I mean is delete it.
Okay.
And I will use the word delete from here on out.
Okay. Anything else on page 2? Uh, any items on page 3 of 6? Anything on page 4 or 6? Anything on page 5 of 6? Anything on page 6 of 6? Hearing none. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 17 select board meeting as amended. May I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce Mello. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from August 7, 17, as amended, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Last but not least, August 31, emergency meeting minutes, one page. You don't have, and I'll be making any corrections, Peter, because I typed it up. Does anybody have any, does anybody have anything to amend on, on minutes from the emergency meeting on August 31? Perfect, Peter, see?
Good.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the emergency meeting minutes as presented for August 31. May I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the meeting on emergency meeting on August 31, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, at this, at this point, at this point, we're going to open our bids. The first one will be the work for Hill Road. This is a, a bid for ditching and drainage improvements on Hill Road between 277 and 295 Hill Road. The project includes ledge stump and fill removal as needed to provide a ditch 24 inches below the road road surface. 48 inch ditch stone shall be placed to shape the ditch, and disturbed areas shall be seeded and mulched. And rest is legal lingo. And so we have, I'll give you that Hill Road 1. Um. This is, this one was paying an email, and this one. It's a Parker Road. I'm just, I'll open this in case there are two bids running below.
Did I have the name of the submitter?
Uh, yeah, I'll admit it. The bids, yes. Hold on. Just making sure it's. We received two bids for the work on Hill Road. Mr. Mello, you want to read this one? Second page, that is.
Okay. It comes from Brennan Construction, B R E N N A N. Addressing.
Sure.
Uh, they're out of Saxon's River Vermont. It's P O Box 571 3 Rivers Street, Saxon's River Vermont, 05154. And the bid is for Brookline Vermont, ditching and drainage. Date in 9/5.
Bid it out?
Uh, the bid is to create so much ditch along the uphill type of Hill Road between 277 and 295 Hill Road, and includes ledge, stump, and fill removal. Note, sole material removed from site is to be deposited at the time garage or gravel pit unless otherwise negotiated. Total cost, $28,500.
Would you say the number again, please?
$28,500.
How many?
28,000.
28. Thank you.
500. 28,500, $28,500.
All right, and Mr. Noga, you have the second bid to the Hill Road?
Yes, this is, bid is dated 9/5/22, and it indicating the area of concern is between 277 and 295 Hill Road. It says we bid $19,900 to remove, I, I'm going to need some deciphering here. Is that bumps of ledge or clumps of ledge?
Oh.
Humps of ledge, stump, and build to, and fill to provide a ditch 24 inches below road surface. Place 4 inch to 8 inch ditch stone and ditch. All disturbed areas seeded and mulched. Provide two flaggers and signage to maintain one-way traffic through work area. Signed by Mr. Win Clark.
All right, we have two bids for the work on Hill Road. One is for $28,500, and the second one is for $19,900, which is $8,600 lower than the initial bid. I'm going to make a motion and we can discuss this, okay?
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the low bid from A.S. Clark and Sons for the price of $19,900. May I have a second on my motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Bruce Mello. Let's, and following discussion, any discussion?
Yes, Win.
Yes.
Uh, back when Mark and I were with the gentleman from Wyndham Regional, I seem to have a recollection that you had, A.S. Clark, that is, and did on a repair of that stretch of road that was significantly less than this roughly 12 months ago. Is there a reason why it went from that amount to this amount?
Very, very good reason. Just because Mark was going to provide, and that's the big delay to help, and also the town was going to provide, um, violence. In other words, we were going to work together with Mark.
Right.
I mean.
Okay. That, that answers the question.
Your one bid was for Hammer and.
Yeah.
I can't remember. They were going to supply an accelerator and stuff. That's the difference.
And, and I should probably note for the record that A.S. Clark did provide an updated certificate of insurance dated 9/2 of 2022.
There, there was also a certificate of insurance for Brennan, uh, contractors. Any further discussion? I did make note that this is a Brennan aid project that we will be, that we have submitted for assistance from Wyndham Regional, correct?
That is correct.
So, so the, so this will be even more efficient recovery.
Yeah, the only, I guess, other comments, I'm sitting here thinking, am I missing anything? What do you expect the deadline for completion work to be?
Oh, it says the 22nd. Friday.
Of September.
Of September.
September, okay.
Right. Right, okay.
We experiment, Mr. Mays, Ellen Mays, and said that it goes over a couple days. So that, I mean, we're going to try to achieve that goal.
Yeah, you know, we had, I had contacted Wyndham Regional and said that it's kind of short term to, to get it all done, and I had concerns because we, what if you had rain or significant storm or whatever, and you're right. Jeff Nugent of Wyndham Regional said they would help us out in terms of being flexible in completion, so that, that jives. Good.
What do you expect to get from Wyndham Regional?
It's like $6,000.
Yeah, $6,700.
Really?
Yeah.
A little less than $300.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, I've made a motion. It's been seconded. It's in discuss. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of awarding the bid for the work on Hill Road, as stated, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. The bid has been awarded then to A.S. Clark and Sons. If you'll put on that form, accepted on that form.
On the, on itself.
On the bid itself.
I'm sorry, who seconded the motion?
Me.
Bruce Mello.
Thank you.
For discussing it. He seconded the, the motion. All right, well, thank you. We're going to move on to the next bid.
Thank you, Win.
All right, at this time, the town of Brookline requests for proposal. The town of Brookline is requesting bids for stream bank repairs along Parker Road caused by the July 29 flooding. The area of the stream bank is approximately 60 feet long, 7 feet high. The existing rip rap must be removed and replaced with a stacked toe slope at at least 4 foot high, and existing stone may be reused on the road surface. All interested vendors shall contact and go on with the rest of the paperwork. The requested sealed bids are received by September 7, and, um, the project completion date would be October 1, 2022. So let's take a look at our, our bids. We have Parker Road. Parker Road, and Parker Road. All right.
Three of them.
I'm going to read the first one.
Right, again.
I have in front of me a bid proposal from Wright, W R I G H D Maintenance, Inc., 151 Vermont Route 30 New Fane. Into the Parker Road. It's the stream bank repairs on Parker Road, um, and the.
Joseph Wright, Joe Wright?
Joseph Wright, R I G H D, and he serves, supplied the certificate of insurance and asked for the bid is following that. This bid price is $7,365. $7,365 with Parker Road, Joe Wright. Bruce, what do you have?
My bid is from Brennan Construction again, 19,500. 19,500. Again, it also includes a certificate of insurance.
Okay. Mr. Noga?
Uh, yes, this bid is from A.S. Parkinson's, dated 9/5/22 for the location of Parker Road. It says, remove existing rip rap and save, build stacked toe wall at least 4 foot high, and replace, uh, existing rip rap. We bid $2,750 to do this project, and signed by Win Clark. And again, another certificate of liability, insurance liability dated 9/2 of 22.
That, that number is $2,750?
Yeah, it's a period between 27 and 50, but I don't think he needs 2750. I think he needs $2,750.
All right, so we have pre-bid. A.S. Clark and Sons for $2,750, Brennan Construction, $19,500, and Wright Construction, $7,365. Uh, I'd like to, I'm going to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we'd accept the low bid at our preferred vendor, A.S. Clark and Sons for the work on Parker Road, in the amount of $2,750. May I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Stan. Uh, now, discussion. Any further discussion?
What is the completion date? It's just close to the advertised date in the paper?
Yeah.
Must be completed. It works in the stream.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the lowest bid from our preferred vendor, A.S. Clark and Sons, for $2,750 for the work on, uh, the Parker Road, uh, project, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Let it be known, it was unanimous. All were in favor. Uh, if you can write accepted on that proposal. And we went not accepted on these two. Great, happy yes. Well, thank you very much for, uh, me. We opened everything, right, to accept it immediately. Okay, I was hoping to offer everything we need in mind.
Doc, you who? Do you know what you want to say?
Send it out to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, members of the public, one hour, heated fighter representatives, town buildings, and open discussion from other residents.
You mentioned you want to just, maybe pick out of that, out of that numbers you want.
So see if you can hear.
Isn't, isn't, is he online?
He's supposed to be, John. No, it's not good.
Dan, Dan Stewart?
Yeah, he's supposedly coming.
Visiting, huh, so shall we?
So did you, why?
Did you wanna start to talk about, would you like to, or would you rather wait? Okay, you would rather wait, we can move down to um town buildings, Arfa support, we have um Leanne Parker here uh uh representing the Brookline Meeting House, and we will talk with her first, we can switch in the agenda items, so. Okay, Leanne?
Yeah.
Um. As you know, I've just re, I've just got a review very quickly of what Arfa is, um, it is a federally government subsidized program that helps to support public health expenditures, it addresses the negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, and it was COVID-nineteen. It may not, may replace lost public sector revenues. Provide premium pay for essential workers and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. In addition to direct government services, Arfa will allow cities to invest in infrastructure and log programs to support workers and small businesses. Arfa provides state and local governments with the resources to stabilize their opening budgets, operating budgets, and many governments incurred large deficits in twenty-twenty as the economic slowdown hurt tax revenues and local governments as uh assume significant pandemic-related costs. To remedy this imbalance, many systems pare back essential services. First responders, sanitation workers, planning personnel, and other governmental employees face hour reductions in pay laws and other government cuts back on contracts with agencies. So the funding has been allocated to Brookline, it is in an amount of three hundred dollars per resident. And um I believe we just got, I haven't checked, I think we just got the second um amount, uh, uh, our, our Arfa funding, and I don't have that number in front of me.
Twenty-five thousand plus, I think.
Uh, she talks about, she's gotta check it, all together, it was like a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
All together. Approximately a hundred and sixty thousand, I was gonna say.
Right. Seventy-nine plus, a hundred and fifty-eight, I think.
The, the total.
Do you have it?
Uh, was it seventy-nine? Yeah, seventy-nine two, seventy-nine thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and five cents plus. So you're looking at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars inside there.
Okay, so approximately a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is what Brookline itself has received, and so.
Well, we will receive, I'm not sure we got the larger one yet, have we? They come in two, two lots, seventy-nine, one.
They come in two packets, correct, so it's, it's anticipated shortly. Um, welcome Stephen John, I'm gonna, we, we uh skipped over doing, um, oh, he's here, I thought you were on the argument. Uh, but we've already introduced.
On the map, man.
Yeah, we've already introduced Leanne, so we're gonna let Leanne go first, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. So I just explained what the, what the funding is and how it's used, and, and I know that our, our building has some needs for it, so I would just like to make a present, a presentation, and Stan?
I have a question, uh, Leanne, are you here for Arfa or are you here to go over the RFP estimate for the foundation as well?
I'm here for Arfa.
You are, okay.
Okay.
Great. So, I don't know, I don't really have a presentation, all I can recount is that you and I had a conversation about how the select board is extremely supportive of things going on um at the meeting house and in looking at our budget and at the demands that we have coming up, um. I E. the foundation repair, um, you had thought that there might be some funds that you could um move over into the meeting house pocket.
Appropriate.
Right, appropriate, so that we never fall below, like, so we always have around fifteen thousand dollars in the bank. So what I understood.
That's why I presented.
Right, right.
Through.
And so I'm here to say, and I think it's great, we're in the middle of a, of uh this grant proposal for doing repair on the foundation and um the Vermont Historical, I'm sorry, the.
Vermont Preservation.
No, it's not Preservation, it's uh the Vermont Department of Historical Preservation. Right, so, um.
She must be.
We're in the middle. No, no, we've always done that.
Yeah, two entities, the one, uh, historic preservation was in the yellow one.
Right, we're going after the, the.
We're going, we're going after the one historic preservation.
Right, and the one that also that, that was applied for for the Belfry and the Ball Street work that, that uh that we won that back in two thousand seventeen, we got that award, so we're going back now for the foundation for them. Okay, and I said.
Yeah, that's, that's different than the one we get for the rounds class.
Right, okay, okay.
Has.
So this is the historic preservation group?
Yes.
This, uh, the Brookline Meeting House Committee Chair, Leanne Parker is here, describing the works, the uh committee is the grant work that is being uh applied for to do foundation repairs and looking for appropriations from Arfa to help meet the grant match.
Yes, got that.
Very well said.
Just wanted to get the uh, the names right, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Parker, can you spell your first name?
L, sorry? L E E. A N.
And then middle name Ann, A N E.
What's your middle name?
Good, thank you.
Yeah?
Yes.
Uh, have they been called uh to ask them if that would be covered under historic preservation?
Yeah, I am, actually, I, Caitlin is on vacation, but she did get back to me through text, and I also found is um what work is eligible for funding here, and it mentions, um.
Okay, the workstation too, huh?
Yeah. We're in good shape.
Stations, electrical plumbing, heating, fire, electricity. So foundation? I believe it.
I have a copy here, I can mark that.
While you're looking at that, I, I, I will share that the, it's a very active committee, glad to be on it.
Oh, so if you say what work is eligible, the first point, work on failed structural component such as the building spring, foundation, or roof. I just have, the first bullet point on the page.
New one?
What work is eligible for funding?
Oh, here it is.
Okay.
Sweet.
Alright, so, okay, so we're fine, and I also got her back from Caitlin, and she said yes. We found a foundation. So, um, it'd be great to have this as, as a cushion, not necessarily to use, it just wanted to bring to the the select board's attention that I ran some numbers, and the fundraising has been pretty strong for this, for the meeting house. So since two thousand nineteen fundraising time, which was November, December, two thousand nineteen to current, we have raised over twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Ten thousand and all the other.
Yeah.
When, when, please God. I'm sorry, I didn't hear from when to when?
From the fall, from the beginning of the fundraising campaign in two thousand nineteen until basically current, and I can break it down for you if you're interested.
Nova, I'm, that's, that's.
That's very.
Yeah, now, congratulations.
So that's seventy, that's seventy thousand over and above the cover.
Right, right off, there was an excellent fundraiser in the year last twenty twenty, twenty-one and that's also including the five thousand dollars from the Cleveland Foundation came in, the three thousand dollars for, from shop.
Wow.
Right, for the windows, and the only grant that we had gotten since then was the three thousand dollars from the Wyndham Foundation to uh go for.
That's what?
Towards the, uh, no, just recently, to go for flashing, for the flashing, for.
Wyndham Foundation came through again, because they did, they did it for the windows back when.
Oh, yes, you know, this is the second time, I submitted a grant in two thousand nineteen to both the um historic preservation and to Wyndham Foundation, Wyndham Foundation gave us three thousand, um, historic preservation, basically, ten oh, we deducted it, um. They shared the scores with us, and there is a certain amount of, the largest deduction um was community participation. Not by a lot, but by some, so we've done a lot more in the last two and a half years. So I'm hoping that that will help pull us into the running, we're asking for fifteen thousand, we're estimating the job will be somewhere around thirty thousand. So, but we won't find out until the spring, and so we have a number of things on our plate that we're looking at for additional expenses, we're looking at store window expense. Remember, when we, last meeting, coming out of our budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Washing and mold removal.
Right, carpet possibly, um, so, you know, there's things on our list besides the foundation that we would like to be able to kind of move along with.
But that just about completes Jan's list.
That completes Jan's list, and I'm on board with a woman, Jen, and I cannot pronounce her last name, it's certain to the hell. She's going to assign someone like Jen, Lewdowski, possibly him, possibly somebody else, and gets on the calendar for this fall, later on this fall, to start working up the next points along the line. Which will be ADA, all removal, um, you know, and, and, you know, there's, the list goes on and on, but, um.
I want you to read that as the uh fundraiser gift for exit one.
Welcome, Stan.
Um, the total amount was, was sixteen hundred and some, but we shared that with Athens Meeting House.
Is there a reason why we did that?
Yeah, we did that because the, for several reasons, one is the, the, I didn't have this in mind at the time, but one of the points on historic preservation grants that we like to see is networking and what we're doing in order to, so joining with the Athens Meeting House Committee, sharing information about vendors, um, workmanship. You know, what we can do better that other people that they have, have had experience with, that we have, and vice versa. So we, we made, uh, basically called, started, I, I called it BAMA, which is short for Brookline Athens Meeting House Association or something rather, but we're gonna meet like quarterly and continue to share, they're doing a huge window project right now, they won a grant, it's a ninety thousand dollar job. That they're, um, we live all the windows in the Athens Meeting House. So there's a lot of benefits to be working with them, but it was also a show of faith that, that we can work on fundraisers together, we believe that we would share profits, they were wonderful help.
But you're talking about benefits, conjunction to show historic preservation and where to.
Right, but that's, that's another side of it, that we are, you know, reaching outside, knowing we're in, trying to build alliances.
Well, Leanne, thank you so much for coming today, we're, we're, today we're sort of absorbing this information and uh certainly, you know, keep, keep you up, right, where, what's going on.
Correct.
And I, I might jump back on when I. Okay.
Thanks for this. Sure.
Thank you, have a great day. Um. Yeah, yeah, there we go. Alright, um, next we will have our D V fiber representatives, uh, uh, Stephen John and Don Dunne, they are both here. I did not get to put it up online, but I did print out, I'm the other, I'm on a tree here, um, but it will be in our files for other people to look at, um, we would like for you to explain a little bit about uh your program so that it gets in our minutes so that residents can understand this, uh, I will say that when the uh first reach out from the D V fiber consortium came across our desk, we had different people who volunteered to sit on it, but realized it was a very uh time-consuming and involved process, we very, great quote for Don for, for stepping up and, and helping out, representing Brookline, um, and it, we uh have as you said, about three hundred and fifteen res, homes, about five hundred residents in town, um. And we do have some areas that are under service, not as much as I thought, I think if, maybe if you did some research, you can tell us a little bit more about the service and uh uh ha, and, and um timeframes and timelines and such, that would be great, and I don't know who would like to speak first.
Who, who?
Yeah. Okay, we're back, well, uh, thank you very much, I'm Stephen John. Oh, you from my past, uh, practice.
Stan Nova and Bruce Dow.
And I, I was really happy to hear Leanne's talk in uh meeting house.
Sorry, could I, I ask for a little bit better microphone?
Oh, you want, you want to sit on?
Yeah, and.
My work, I'm like, that's underneath the shade here.
You can sit here a bit.
Alright, Peter, I'm glad you brought that in, sorry, how about now, Peter, can you hear you, hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Alright. I hope this, okay, I use my playground voice, right?
You don't.
Alright, so, so, uh, yeah, uh, where was I, oh, well, anyway, it's up in the new house, because I know the school and uh that, and the uh property for the meeting house, Stan really worked a lot on that, I think, uh, trying to get in that online, you know, anyway.
Sorry, can I, can I quickly ask, I'm, I'm sorry, can I quickly ask, it's, it's sometimes hard to follow, um, so we're, we're looking at different proposals for Arfa investments, right? And it's not a decision meeting today, but just like what ideas do, do residents and other stakeholders have, correct?
That is correct, we're here to hear, it would be educational learning for us from the people who might ask for appropriations from this Arfa funding.
I got you.
That we use it to the benefit of our abilities, thank you.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for giving back on card, okay, so I'm representing D V fiber, that is the Deerfield Valley Communication Community District. That was uh enacted, was opportunity for towns to join together to uh get up, provide high-speed internet to those who have not been connected up to now through the private sector. This is a public entity, it's a unique entity, uh, Communication Community District, if you think about it like a water district or a fire district to combine towns to take care of that particular uh need. Uh, the Communication Community District uh is meeting the need of, of reaching those and connecting those to, basically bridging the digital divide, which is apparent in most of our towns, there are some people that, no matter how much money they have, because of where they live, uh, they're not gonna be able to get connected. And uh that's because we don't have a population density in our towns in all regions, parts of our towns that justify the private sector's investment. And so I did communications, so uh that was why the legislature enacted Act uh seventy-one and uh enabled towns to join together, you had to have these two towns, we started out with five, we voted at town meeting in uh two thousand nineteen and uh, and that was uh the beginning of this, this C U P, and now our twenty-four towns, Brookline joined, uh later on, I can't, I don't have the memories about how the sequence came, but at any rate, they're all contiguous towns, they're all next to each other. We don't have uh Athens, we don't have Rockingham going, those are the, the primary towns that have not joined uh in our county, and that's because they're, they're served by fiber from uh Vito. Uh, Springfield, I know that they talked to me, but there's no reason for them to, 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 to join. Uh, we go all the way up to Weston, that's in Windward County, and we go all the way down to Stamford, in the south, and then we go straight across the border. Stamford's in Bennington County, that's why you're in that, I've heard of it, Stamford, Reevesboro, in Bennington County, then you go to uh Whittingham, Alavacs, Kilford, Vernon, all, all those towns are going, and going up the
So far now.
Twenty-four town, we're going all, all the way up the river, medley river to uh Westons, Westons, so, and Patons. Uh, and now, and Brookline, I mean, a new thing. Well, anyway, uh, so how, what's unique about this is that this is, as it says in this PowerPoint, um, toward the end, uh, just to summarize. I've heard you a lot of detail here, but just to summarize, uh, the the whole point of this is that we are a D V fiber, the people's internet, owned by the citizens of the twenty-four towns and governed by the representatives appointed by their select boards. That's why Don has been serving on our operations committee, I do thank you for his appointment, he's been wonderful, uh, wonderful asset, and he has a ten. He's been wonderful, uh, wonderful asset, and he adds a technical, uh, perspective, I think, to contribute to this project, invaluable. And we do have a wonderful collection of people appointed from various towns, but we also have volunteers who are not appointed, and we also serve in committees. And we have, uh, also alternates from each town, uh, I don't think we have an alternate in Brookline, but consider your population might, you know, it might be case. But those alternates also serve on our committees, and it's fifty to sixty volunteers that are doing this right now. We have now just recently, uh, hired, uh, on a contract basis, instead of consultant, our new executive director, uh, uh, from Guilford. And her name is Gabrielle Chifrida, she's actually a former attorney, uh, I think she's pricing as attorney now, but for the rate, uh, very, very capable. She put together a, a great, the historic, talking about the meeting house, the great historic preservation combination, uh, uh, improvement of the Putnans block. Which is where Route seven and Route nine cross in Bennington, if you've ever been to Bennington. There's an old hotel, big building. And that was a big project, uh, and, uh, and she'd worked for Stevens Associates and so forth, and architects. So, uh, we think we have a really capable leader now. We, we have had a wonderful project leader who's going to continue as long as necessary, who's retired consultant from New York City, who lived in Halifax. And he was first our clerk and then took on this project management, David Jones, this is from Halifax. Uh, however, neither of those people had a voting position on the board, it's the twenty-four. Point represented by the town. Now, what's, I think, I went through this before, but the risk to the town is not, that, that, if, if this project goes belly up. Hard to believe at this point, we just had twenty-one point nine million, but if we went belly up, uh, we would, uh, the, the law determines that we would, the assets would be, uh, uh, taken over by the state. And then they would be decided what to do in bankrupts. Uh, but there's no burden on the towns, and we have no rights or reason to ask for any tax money at all. I'm, I'm actually here not so much asking for Deerfield Valley, uh, Communication District, but for those citizens in your town who may have financial difficulty connecting. Through the service of high speed internet fiber. Uh, we estimate across the state that ten to twelve percent of, of residents are financially strapped, basically. They, they would qualify for subsidy by the FCC. And the FCC has a program, it's, uh, I think it's based on two hundred, below two hundred percent of the poverty level. Uh, and, uh, you know, the thing that is be interesting when you follow up in your own discussions about this. Is to what extent you know Brookline and, and, and ascertain, or estimate more accurately than the spreadsheet that I've compared with in my, on these copies over here. Of, 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 of the need. But just to put in the context, uh, we now have, we have already received and, and pretty much invested entirely and spent four point one million dollar grant to organize and legal, uh, services and planning. And also community construction planning sector, surveying the, the poles, they call it a ride out, preparing the poles and all that. So now we're going to be at the construction stage, almost immediately, we'll start probably hanging fiber in October. Uh, because we're working with Green Mountain Power, and, uh, they are, we have to get a permit for the space on the pole. And they have to ride out with us to see if the pole can take it. Sometimes poles have to replace, we're, we have permits out now for, uh, uh, twelve thousand poles. Uh, and that's not the whole, that's not the whole project right yet, because we are doing this phases. But you can imagine, this twenty-four towns, we have a design, universal design. That means, universal design means it's capable of connecting every single E nine one one location in our twenty-four town. And that is actually a requirement of the Vermont Community Broadband Board, with the five person board dispersing the funds available to support this part. However, the funds and the grant was directed to connecting those unserved and underserved locations in the town. And of course, to get there, you can't fly in by helicopter like the, like, by fiber, so you got to have it follow the power lines. And that's the right way, we have, we have access to the, to the power line. So if you're on the grid, then, uh, then you have a right to be connected, and you will be connected. But it's the plan enables you to be connected to our fiber network, publicly owned, yes.
So the only reason why you would add poles would be because you chose to fold. Service, putting it in a spot where it's not being served. And if the poles that are existing can't handle.
Right. The good news is Green Mountain Power replacing the poles, and they paid for the poles, because they got to replace poles in. It's kind of a spring cleaning effort for them in a way, we have this side they go on. But, uh, I haven't heard anything too, too bad about your pole, uh, what they call the plant. The worst locations are really in Halifax and Marlborough and so forth. Green Mountain Power inherited those from Halifax, a co-op, and then they went to, uh, Vermont, uh, the central one, a public service, and then, then went to Green Mountain Power. So, anyway, forget into many details. Uh, but I did want to explain that, uh, the grant money goes for us to build to those places, and it is not to necessarily. Compete with the people that are already well-served. I mean, compete for their business, that is directly. Now, we have to go, the, the plan is in Brookline, we got to come up right with it, to get them, we do not connect. So, we're going to be, you know, we're going to be hanging fiber, and that fiber is capable and it's open to the public to, to have the access. So, it's, it's not that people are prohibited from using it, but we can't spend grant money. If you live close to the roads, I mean, you live close to the road here, but, okay, so, so who lives close to the road here?
I do.
Okay, you live close to the road. Are you within four hundred feet?
That's, that's probably.
Well, we, 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 it's likely, although it hasn't been voted finally by the board yet, but we'll, we'll probably have a free connection of four hundred feet, aerial, or underground.
So can I, can I, can I ask real quick, Stephen, this is very interesting. So I'm understanding that, basically what you would do is put fiberglass lines on the, uh, electricity poles, right? And then connect houses this way, yeah? And do you have data how many, uh, Brookline residents currently do not have internet?
Yeah. Yes, I do. What premises, what is it?
We, we are, uh, there's, there's a total of three hundred nineteen premises, of which, uh, twenty-three are either unserved or underserved. Uh, and I think underserved is, where is it?
Like four one, uh, uh, you know anything about the numbers on internet? There's a, there's a certain fiber, there's a megabits per second down and a megabits per second up.
Right.
Four megabits per second down, well, this is considered underserved, hang on, we're going to follow with Don, starting with you. Four, four one is four down and one up. And if you have that, you probably can't do any Zoom or any, you know, kind of meeting thing like this.
Yeah, so that's your definition of underserved?
That's underserved, that's underserved.
Un- underserved, okay, okay.
Underserved, underserved is a standard of twenty-three, three, twenty-three down and three up. Now, I pay for twenty-five, so twenty-six, twenty-five and three. I paid for twenty-five three at my house, I don't get it. But that's because the contract fine language, fine print says up to. And if there are more people connected on a copper line, it goes down, it keeps going down. Uh, you just, you just can't maintain a cover. Now, most, I think, a lot of your residents are, are here served by cable, so you don't have that copper line dependency entirely. And, uh, but cable is limited, unless they improve the cable, and in fact Comcast could hang fiber as well, and they want to spend the money. Uh, but the cable is limited to a hundred down and twenty up. That is scientifically, they're not, you necessarily get that from, the older cable is even less, like the new cable. Okay, so, uh, so the question before you regarding ARPA, and I consulted with KDA, but, uh, the LLC, make sure I heard this right. There are towns that have already committed money to connect those, to help connect those residents who may not qualify. They may be farther away than the free connection limit, or the standard connection is what we call.
Beyond the four hundred.
Beyond the four hundred. So that's an additional extent.
So how many people?
And so. So that's the question, I mean, standard, we weigh farther than four hundred, but, you know, that, that's something that we can es- estimate by satellite. When we get closer to the actual situation, but I don't have that satellite, uh, data here for you. We are now engaged in a project to, uh, to, uh, go to everyone's premises. And to actually ascertain what the cost would estimate, what the cost would be for that customer. Because we want, if you called up two months, in like two years from now, or whether I want to get connected, we gave your number, your invite, nine, nine one one address. We'd want to know, DV fiber would want to know when they answer the call, uh, what it'll cost, you know, they want to tell you straight up. If you're a standard, you know, free, uh, connection, or, or it's going to cost you probably a dollar fifty a foot past four hundred feet, you know, something like that, it'll cost something. I, I, I really don't want to be quoting all those numbers too carefully, because my board has not yet voted on approving this, we're trying to get them inside.
So, yeah, I had that question too, Stephen, how, how expensive would it be to get a glass fiber connection then, um, in, in this model? Can you, can you estimate that? Let's say, one of these, um. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dan. Well, what, where, where is your red, are you, how far are you away from the present power line, power pole? You get, you got electricity in your house?
Yes, yeah. I'm just, just trying to understand what the value, what the value.
The thing is, we can't go to a place that doesn't get. Yeah, so now you're asking about the price, I can't estimate the cost now, I, I believe it's going to cost, uh, about a dollar fifty a foot. For the distance farther than four hundred feet.
For the infra, for the infrastructure, right?
Yeah, the wires, doing so with fiber.
My, my question was for the end user, when I'm now, uh, getting internet via that new infrastructure, via the community-based grid, essentially. Which I think is a great idea, by the way. How expensive or how affordable is it in the end? Right now I'm getting, uh, internet with Comcast for forty dollars a month. Is, is it competitive?
Yeah. Well, uh, I, I don't, I don't know what you're saying, I know what the, don't know what the circumstances are, but I did want to point out that our board has adopted a customer accessibility and affordability policy. And we are determined as a publicly owned entity, uh, to be, be certain that not only are we able to connect everybody. But that it is accessible, and not only accessible, but affordable to the cus, to the, to the, to everybody. Now, uh, you asked for specific about the, the price, the, it'll be in tiers, probably three tiers of service. We will be able to provide, the design of our plan is to provide, uh, a hundred to a hundred, five hundred to five hundred, a, a gigabyte, a gigabyte, two gigabytes. You know, the limit will be on your end with your equipment at the home, the limit won't be on our end if you're in the library. Of course, there'll be an incremental fee for the increased bandwidth. But, uh, one of the challenges that we face as a, a public board with this policy is that we've got to figure out how to raise the money. To enable people to, uh, pay the monthly fee. And I'm not here for that today, uh, I don't think that's something the town should take on. Uh, I'm here today to make sure that everybody gets connected. And one thing that the towns can do to help DV fiber get everybody connected, is to allocate some out, uh, some ARPA money. Uh, which, by the way, we're considered not a sub recipient, but a beneficiary, this, this for the legal part, but you might want to know.
Okay, and basically what your proposal is, that it's a, sorry, the proposal in a nutshell is that the fiberglass will have, uh, expandable bandwidth, right? For, for better scale, and then everybody can get connected without creating a bottleneck, that's kind of the proposal. Is that, is that correct?
That's right, well, yes, you're correct, Dan, you're correct, and, uh, in fact, ours is designed to be ten gig. So, uh, you know, the capacity is really, of our design, is really future-proofed in a way.
It's future, future-proofing, I got it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you, you're the capacity. We expect that people in five to ten years will be wanting to communicate holographically. And that's the prediction, which will take a hell of a lot more transmission of information. Now, you know, if I, ten years ago, they probably, I was going to be, uh, you know, chair of a board, and we'd have twenty-four members meeting, uh, you know, three or four times a month. But they're, we have more meetings than that, so, anyway, uh, all remotely, because, you know, we wouldn't be able to meet if we had to drive each other, we're too far away. And never get attendance, we didn't have a quorum, you know? Well, so, you know, COVID, we're never going to take that away. But, uh, I, I, uh, I, I at this point, I just know that there are other systems that have been designed previously. Where, uh, for example, the private sector limits the bandwidth you can get, because they can control it, we can control the traffic at our end. You know, but that's not something that we want to engage in, we want to make sure we have capacity for the future. And if somebody goes a house next door, or between you and the next neighbor, they ought to be able to get on. And it shouldn't detract from your connection, because in my neighborhood, that's what happens with copper.
Right.
But, but, uh, we're going to be connected to the outside world by, by three, uh, points. Uh, and, uh, Stanford, Brattleboro, and probably up by Whittinghall, Manchester, where we go out to the outside internet. And we actually have to bid and contract for the bandwidth that enters our system. That's from the big players in the, the four big players in the internet world. And the only internet around the whole world, okay? I mean, we're, you know, it's amazing. So, we are not dependent, we're, our, our product partner that we're contracted with is, is determined not to be dependent upon one provider. We're going to, at each of these entry points, at a point, we're going to have three different providers that we have different bandwidth for. So if one of them goes down, we're so, we're still alive, too. The other thing that's happening is our design has three loops, one is in the south, and we'll leave you about this in the air. And the, one in the south, one in the middle, and one in the north. And you're connecting to the one in the middle. Now, the towns that need the most have the lousiest connection, for example, Marlborough, ninety-six percent unserved.
Really?
Halifax, a hundred percent. Uh, Stanford, uh, Reevesboro, uh, where's up? Reevesboro is about a hundred percent, so there are six towns, when we try to build out, we're going to try to get, they're at that, their fiber service area, little sec, little distribution points in town. Uh, to, to, uh, be double first. And so we have a priority list, there are a hundred and fifty-five of these little sectors, based on the design. And, uh, that's, and then two more, I'll get into it. And, uh, we now have, uh, I put sixteen, I've been finished, uh, in terms of detail design. The whole grid map is all designed for it already, but the, the detail to actually hang up and connect people, that's going to be, they're sixteen, but now we have twenty, I just need to get a reading. I mean, we're making progress all the time. And, uh, and it'll be getting criminal like this. Well, that, we're, uh, originally the stability segment that WRC did was ten years, but we're, we're, we're shrinking that down to five. Uh, but, uh, we may in fact, when we get down to the fourth and fifth year, we may be talking mostly about trying to compete with or connect people in Brattleboro. Or in Dover or Wilmington, where they already have a lot of cable. Uh, or even up Route thirty here. We're, we're going to come up Route thirty, because we got to connect the people up in the hills that aren't connected. That's, that's why the, you know, it's, it's kind of a strange project, you know, in that regard. But they get, back to the, we, our, our present grant will take us out for fifteen to eighteen months of construction. The plan is to, uh, construct thirty miles a day, uh, a month, sorry, thirty miles a month. We, we tend to connect, uh, we, we can connect, uh, third, that's a little, I forgot, I shouldn't say. Uh, about a hundred eighty people a month is the minimum, but we could connect more depending on demand. So, this first section that we have with the funding, that's going to get us one seventy-six miles or so of, of construction. And it's going to be able to connect, of the seven thousand, over seven thousand people that are unserved, underserved in our twenty-four towns. We're going to be able to connect over four thousand in that first spring.
You know what I really like, but, you know what I really like about this, Stephen? I think, you know, there's a cybersecurity aspect to this, right? I understood you have these three access points from which, and you buy, uh, you buy the internet connection basically from bigger providers, but you have several that you can buy from, right? So if one goes down. So if one goes down because of a cybersecurity attack, you can still operate, right? And you can keep the the net online, I really like that idea. Um, can you, can you remind us of the? Excuse me?
He's Stuart. Oh, Stuart, that's Dan, isn't it?
Insurance.
Obviously.
Yeah, Dan Power is on the news, but still there.
Oh, we still got the right man, I'm sorry. I've been calling you Dan, your order.
We're almost the same, you can call us both Dan and we'll know who who you're talking to. Um, can you remind us of the of the ask to the town? I I I didn't get that in the beginning.
Well, uh, this estimate sheet that I just put out, what does it say there? Oh, well, there are a bunch of variables that you have to consider. First of all, is the poverty level really what 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 is average? You know, in Halifax, uh, they their their board went for a higher amount of money because they recognize they have more mobile homes. They have perhaps a a a higher percentage of people who will have trouble getting connected. Mobile homes can be difficult because legally, or we, the the present standard is, I guess in the old days, you could have a mobile home and hang anything on it you wanted. But the present standard is you gotta have conduit, underground connection to a mobile home. I think that's national because they're afraid of low weight.
Incorriged.
Yeah, incorriged. So if if you have a person that has a mobile home and they'd like to be connected, maybe they aren't connected at all, then then they have to have a conduit connection. That'll be an extra expense because we're not gonna, we're not gonna construct or build a conduit for people. That gets into a real devilish issue because we have to be able to follow through with what we promise. And if I promise you, I can get a contractor to dig that ditch and put in that conduit for you. And that contractor gets another job someplace else and whatever, you know, um.
So well.
Yeah, so I I mean, I don't think our board's gonna go for it. I think the board's gonna stay with, look, if it's a conduit, the owner has to be, we'll give them a listed contract. The owner has to be in charge of getting that conduit in there the way they want it. Now, some people already have conduits and some of their conduits will be used. Uh, it depends on the size. And the survey that we're doing, the three three uh connection surveys, the detail we're getting is what's the size of the conduit, what's the length of the conduit. It's a, and so that you don't have too many surprises for the customer. Uh, so uh, that was about the difficulty of the need. That's why it's so hard to tell. See, I I'm talking to boards like that, yours in Brookline here because I know that you know the town the best and you'll be able to make a decision. In in Marlboro, they went for twenty-four thousand, you know, the town is bigger. That's what they committed. In Halifax, it was forty thousand. Uh, I forgot what it was in Jamaica. You know, Jamaica committed.
You know what would be helpful? Um, I think it's really hard to to react to this when you don't know what it's gonna cost. Um, but you have some reference points right from what other towns did. Um, maybe you can provide a number of what the percentage of ARPA money was that other towns uh put into digital infrastructure like that or into into exactly your proposal. Then we can compare it a little bit.
Okay, right. That's a good point. I could, I could wanna talk to some of those things on that chart and you know about this.
Okay, so the people here already have. One, there's no nearby, can you hear me okay?
Still aware.
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Always.
Okay, alright.
Um, okay, so, so we have three hundred and nineteen uh residents in in the town. Now, we don't know, but a common assumption would be ten percent of those people would need help, okay? Um, and then we don't know how many of those people are gonna accept um the internet. People might not, might not want, okay? So if if everyone's, we'll go to the high side, right? We'll say eighty percent of the people that are eligible are gonna take it. Okay, that's twenty-five and a half premises that need help, okay? And your standard connection fee is a hundred dollars each, which is two thousand five hundred and fifty-two, okay? And then you have the non-standard connections, that's where you're going over four thou- four hundred feet. That's where you're going uh conduit, et cetera, et cetera, okay? That's gonna be roughly an average of one thousand five hundred dollars for the, for that non-standard connection, okay? So if eight people, which is twenty-five percent, need need that, that's another twelve thousand dollars. So all that adds up to fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two, okay? Um, and and part of it is how many people in town um are are further away, right? We don't know that, I don't know that percentage. I, you know, I've only been in town for two years. So um, I don't, I don't know that. And and then um, how many of those people need help, right? So those are the numbers that the the document kinda shows, high side, low side. And and we can, um, I have an Excel spreadsheet if you wanna give me more detailed uh numbers or or whatever, we can plug it in and come up with a, come up with a more better number.
Yeah, it's really an estimator. And and you know, there's no, there's nothing sacred about it. And and so, you know, I I really like to make sure that, you know, boards like yourself look at the numbers and look how it fits together and see what really suits. Your town, as you know it, and the the take rate is interesting in your town. I think you see there are columns there that say twenty percent or.
Yeah, eighty percent is the extreme, right?
Yeah, so the take rate is the percentage of people in town who will actually take uh uh become our customers, basically. And that won't happen overnight, uh, you know? But you may have a different sense of the town. Uh, I know in Marlboro, I'm saying, gosh, probably eighty percent of the people are gonna take it because we got nothing. Okay, but you know, if you're happy with your cable and you like your clicker, but you're not gonna get, uh, you know, you have to go à la carte for your channels and for whatever you want for entertainment. It's on our service because we're not making money on on some channel content. We have E N or some. Yeah, well, they, but but you know, there are ways to get those kinds of uh, I mean, at least the younger generation is getting all that by à la carte, you know? Audience, you know, that speaker for them to pay for what they want and pay for one of the channel packets, you know? So I I I think we're we're deciding to leave it up. The other thing people ask about is telephone. It is possible, it it will be possible to have your telephone over the internet, over the fiber. There's a disav- there are advantages to that. Uh, one is that people who are hard of hearing uh report that the uh quality of the sound is much better over the, over the fiber connection. Uh, that, which makes sense because technically there's nothing, there's no stack really possible except between the wall and your phone, you know? Because it's light coming through the, through the fiber to the outside of your house. Then on the inside of your house, there's a disadvantage. You have to have an electrical supply very small that converts that light to digital and translates to digital. And the digital is supplying your your router. And then that's what's supplying your signal in the house. So if the power goes out, just like now, your router works, you're not needing to get Wi-Fi on your house. Uh, but you would have telephone now if if it's a copper line analog and the line isn't completely grounded. You know, but if the line goes down, your your telephone goes out too. But the telephone is carrying the power along with that copper wire. And light cannot carry electricity. Light is carrying the message, but not electricity, yeah, so.
Does that piece of equipment that converts the light to a digital format, is that included in the one hundred dollar hookup charge?
Yeah, yeah.
It is.
In fact, I I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, this chart does show a hundred dollar hookup charge, but it's likely, I'm sensing that the board is not gonna go with that, they're gonna go free. So, I mean, it does, if you wanted to deduct some money for that under the estimate, you're simply, that's good. I think you're pretty confident doing it because we're competing with other providers in parts of this state uh that that are gonna connect people free. So, you know, we we we.
Can I ask you a quick, are you, are you saying when the power goes out, uh, the internet is still on because it's glass fiber? So if I have a uh a computer running on battery, I will still be able to continue to work, right?
Yeah, so long as this uh electrical supply for your translator from the light to the digital, it's it's an O M T.
It's not, it's it's not an O M, but we can call it, we can call it an O M, but it's not.
So it it.
Okay, so there's some kind of modem and that, okay, but that is still electric, right? Yeah.
Yes, it has to have a little bit of electricity and that can be provided by a battery. You or you could buy, uh, well, you know, the common way, the cheapest way would be to go to Staples and buy what we call it, the UPS.
Gotcha, okay.
Uh, you know, that would, that would hold you over for eight hours, whatever time you want. Now, we're, we may have such a device available for our phone service because we're, once we're a phone service provider, we're obliged to offer that to the customer. But it may be that it's cheaper for the customer to do their own battery backup in terms of that. But the same thing applies for your computer as as supplies to the phone. I'm just trying to be candid with everybody about what the disadvantages of a voice over internet phone. Now, of course, your cellphone works too, you know? But a lot of people don't have cell service. I I don't have cell service where I live, so I'm up a creek no matter, you know, what.
Do you now?
It's actually a real problem that I often have when I'm on Zoom calls with clients that I get kicked out of the the call, sometimes in the middle of a sentence. And that's to do with the micro glitches in the in the electricity grid, I think. So if we had a digital solution, but this wouldn't happen anymore, that would benefit everybody in the town, I think. I don't know, maybe I'm the only one, but it's.
Well, there's no doubt it's a better product, there there's no doubt it's a better product and a better service. And the other thing I wanna assure you about is that since it's controlled, the fee structure and the service uh and the maintenance is all the responsibility of this board that you appointed. It's a heavy burden. And we are responsible to contrast uh for that work because the twenty-four of us aren't gonna go around and repair your, you know, pole. So, you know, we we have a private partner, Great Works Internet from Bitifer's name. They have constructed uh an infrastructure for Islesborough, the whole island, uh and other communities in Maine, they have a very good reputation. And uh, we have been negotiating pages and pages of details for every single aspect of the project that we need to be done, including construction, uh, design, construction, uh, maintenance, operation, internet service provision, uh, and uh voice over internet. So uh, and we would not be able to get this grant from the V C B B if we didn't have our act together and had those contractors vetted, those contracts vetted, an engineer from V C B B had vetted our uh design, overall design.
Yeah, another, another question. I uh, based on the take rates of twenty, forty, sixteen, eighty, and looking at the range of the estimated totals needed, which ranges from three thousand six hundred and thirty-eight to fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two. Yeah, if I understood your comment earlier, from those, that range of totals, the connect fee can be legitimately not included in it or?
Yeah, yeah, you could subtract whatever. I mean, I I wouldn't, I. Don, Don, Don hasn't been to some of these marketing uh sessions that I've been to retail. But the marketing passports, we're working on this quite now because I I'm I'm heading towards the board on the twenty, what's, what's the twenty-first, is that the next Wednesday? Fourteen, twenty-first, twenty-first will be a full governing board meeting. That's, they're all probably meeting. So we will be deciding on this very issue, I hope, at that time because we will have done a lot enough research to know where we wanna start. Now, we're, you know, we're a business, so it doesn't mean that we don't, can't change something in the future if things look bleak. But right now, we're counting on about a very high take rate uh in these first towns. Now, if I were looking at Brookline, I wouldn't expect that high take rate. You know, I mean, that's why I'm saying, you 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 really are judged, the best judge of what happened. Now, the other thing to think about is that we're not gonna be connecting you right away. You know, we 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 can't, we're, we're, the bad news is we're not starting in Brooklyn.
We don't have the deed.
Our bad, we're, bad news is, but uh, I I can say that that in in the present plan, you are in the, out of seven phases, you're in the fourth phase for the majority of of your constituents. And then another fiber service area is serving the rest of them in the in the sixth phase. That's because of the way the construction logically goes from the engineering point of view, also based on the fact that that that's the difference because basically the town is the same. Although maybe one of those areas actually has more unserved people because we 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 have decided that hundred fifty F S A's fiber service areas really should be uh ranked based on the percentage of unserved people in. But we can't go hopping around either, so it's 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 a government.
So the first one we do is probably gonna have a higher.
Higher percentage, yeah, I could look at the chart and figure that out.
Well, in 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 this town, there are two areas that we're gonna build. Uh, yeah, so that's higher. So the one that we're gonna build first is definitely gonna have a higher need just knowing the way that we're deciding.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, there are, uh, yeah, actually, this looks like, well, I think they've got combined. There's a, one, one F S A has about a hundred thirteen people in it and the other one has two hundred and five locations. That gets you up to about three hundred and whatever, right? So uh, that's where, I I had this little chart that showed each town and the seven stages and how many, you know, locations are in each town and so forth. And it's in the rest of the chart, it's fast run, it adds up to twenty-seven thousand great customers in the end. Uh.
I think you can't get this.
Well, uh, and I really don't want to get, just have a bunch of people getting individual. I just wanna make sure you understand, everybody's included in this. And that's one thing that we're doing now with the engineered uh F S A that we we just uh, this first point. We are now having people from our own towns, the towns affected, looking at those design plans and making sure nobody's left out. And we aren't making any mistakes about what the plan is. Because once that construction starts, we don't wanna have any bumps. We wanna make sure we've done the job and done well. And that will be followed up with, uh, right now, people in some areas are receiving this little, little pamphlet I pass around. Uh, this is exciting news and if they explain to them why somebody might be problem with their property, uh, it will give each person a flyer to explain to them that we're doing a three, three connection survey. And they don't have to take the business, they don't have to take, you know, they don't have to get connected. But we wanna have a database that's prepared to have a class when they say they want it. Uh, and because it costs us more to send somebody out individually after the fact. Okay, Don calls up a month from now, we gotta go out there. You know, you call up six months, I gotta go out there, and that's the problem.
I'm I'm sitting here thinking about the uh, the timeframes that you have a need for.
Yeah.
In the structure of, the town has until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four to advise the federal government supplier of the ARPA monies what we're gonna do with it. And then we have two years to pay it out. So I noticed in your your PowerPoint, I think it was stated that there are four towns that are approved ARPA monies.
Yes.
And you've got six other towns who are considering, I suspect maybe we're one of those six.
Yeah, yeah, I include them.
What timeframe are we under as a town to meet your needs and fill in, to to fulfill our obligations regarding the ARPA structure?
Yeah, well, okay, so the the straightforward answer is you should be on your own time. The I would explain that the towns so far, Halifax and Marlboro, not surprisingly, have allocated money because they have the prospect within the first next twelve months of having people connected and having people say, I can't afford it, okay? So they don't, you know, they don't, but another aspect is that the the line community broadband board has said that they will match the money that towns have put in the ARPA money. And that's an effort that they, see, they can't come up with enough money to pay for everything. They're gonna be able to come up with grants. We expect the I I J A grant will be about a hundred, a hundred fifty million for the state. The ARPA was two hundred fifty million for the state. Now we're talking about a N I N D I A grant, uh, for a hundred million. The governor's gonna put in thirty million to make sure that happens because it has to be a match. So there's about, you know, five hundred, about five hundred million, I don't know, four hundred million, something like that. But we anticipate that that's only gonna get us probably sixty to seventy percent of the way. Because we we have to, we have to have thirty-five, the ribbon was thirty-five, I think it's in closer to fifty now, price keeps going. Uh, by the way, we've already bought fiber, we already have a three hundred mile of fiber set. Uh, but uh, so we anticipate we'll have to get to a positive dividend. That's a positive rate consuming bar. Do you understand what that stands for?
Earnings.
What is it?
Or earnings.
Earnings or?
Or taxes.
It's interest tax. I never did, man, he's not. It's what they use, you know, what what the banks use, uh, the loan money and the the revenue bond bank uh requires about a one point three ratio. That was our our income earnings for.
Maybe that's another way to ask the question a little easier. When would you need to know that we're on?
Oh, well, I know you're on because you got a voting member on the board. But when you have to, when, there'll probably be a. But, but when you have to, when, they'll probably be in phase four, when your customers will get connected. And phase four is going to be immediately following the twenty-four month first uh, grant. And so it's only two years, you know, I mean, you're not, unfortunately, in terms of ARPA, you're not obliged. You know, before, as you said, uh, December thirty-first, twenty-four, to say where you're putting it. But, uh, the, and, but I was mentioning this matching because. It isn't clear to me when the deadline is for the matching month. And if I had inside information to say definitely that September fifteenth was the date. I would be advertising that with all of the, all the towns, but I don't have that to do with it. That was a date they set before and I believe. Uh, that they, uh, are going to extend it because they can't expect towns to be donating money to something they're not going to be, you know, there's no buzz about it. We're one of the front leading C V's in the state of the nine or four. And, uh, there are about two that have done something before us, but, uh, that means a bunch of them. Aren't even getting closer to this real, reality of having, you know, a, a plan. By the way, this is the window of your town. Uh, these two old green things are the, uh, are the fiber service areas here. But these little dots show all your places. Uh, we, we don't, we don't have this stuff, uh, publicly, because they're sure of course. Because, uh, you know, we are in a competitive world and there are, are the private sector. Uh, I don't want to catch this footage of them. They're doing what they need to do to make money and keep their stock holders happy and all that. But they certainly would love to see us fail. Why? Because it's still got customers and we'll lose customers, but also. Because if these communications union districts in the state of Vermont are not successful. And sustainable business model, we, we have vetted plans to make sure it were a business, otherwise we wouldn't be investing the money. We waste the public money, but it, it could be possible that when the bankruptcy comes around, that a, a private company. Buys the entire network and pennies on a dollar. For pennies on a dollar. That's the thing that I'm concerned about and why I think as citizens, if we believe in public authority. And that there should be a public utility, not just something that all the, you know, companies slide over. Uh, then, then we have to, I mean, we, emerging people are supportive.
I have no doubt, as soon as you get any indication from that entity matching money, you will let us know what the deadline.
I will, because, I mean, I think you're ready to make a decision. It's, it's not, I, I don't sense, you know, uh, the meeting house is not a very. The controversial decision neither. I mean, you have a lot of good causes here and I think that if you're like Marlboro. We don't have a lot of infrastructure to spend it on. We don't have, you know, we don't have. We just don't have anything in our town. It's pretty big, you know. I mean, you know, so. So I, I do know that it's some kind of puzzle to decide what can we do, do with this, the benefits, benefits.
We only have a hundred fifty-eight thousand, low under five hundred dollars to spend in, in the various projects. So it's, it's, uh, for me personally, it's a stomach is turning and you're tossing and turning.
Yeah.
Now, someone's mentioned providing housing in the area, which is, you know, needed in every town and, uh.
Yeah, there are lots of.
It's a tough decision.
Lots of good causes and I, I, I don't have the information. I, I was just last night with a, a railroad because we have two places. Points of presence that we have to get a lease agreement with them, with the town, because one's in the firehouse and one's at their Pleasant Valley. Uh, installation and, uh, and we're, because that's the big access point and distribution points for our southern ring. Well, and they, they were very enthusiastic about the project and all, and they going very early in, in on this. And, uh, the assistant manager was recounting that that was because they realized, even though everybody in Bravo had. Really wonderful services in my mind. Uh, they, they have a hundred and eighteen people in Bravo that are certified and unserved, underserved. And they're up in the hills next to Marlboro.
Right, right.
I, I am going to try, try to stick to our timelines on, Don, you have anything to?
No, it's way more practical.
I go to a lot of meetings. I go to more meetings than you.
He said it's on.
Um, if you, if you do have a few minutes to sit here, just in case, I'd like to open up the floor to the residents who have signed in from home. If you would like to ask more questions about D V fiber or share your ideas about ARPA appropriations. That might benefit the community. And so, uh, Dan, you, you've been, um, uh. Waiting for this night for quite a while or so that we, that you were able to join us tonight. Um, you had some very interesting questions. I was wondering if you wanted to become part of our alternate D V fiber representation group. Please do consider that.
The, the fiber, the fiber board.
Fiber board, yes, you know my email.
I know a thing or two about these things, so I can't help myself but ask, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think we, I think both proposals we heard today were, were, uh, in the scope of ARPA as I understand it and interesting. My, my question is, I don't have a proposal, uh, to make to the select board, unfortunately, because I'm, uh, too new in this town to. Have anything of value to, to add or propose, but I was wondering, um, what. Maybe it's good to align on what the priorities would be, you know, what, what is really. Where, and I'm thinking first about the purpose of ARPA is to kind of help the economy recover and, and support those that suffered. A lot from, from the pandemic and I was wondering. Who in our town, uh, falls into that category and what, what is the, what is the need there, right? I would maybe start with this. And I don't know exactly, you know, what the problems were that the town experienced because I came at the tail end of the pandemic into the town, basically. But that would be my first question. And then the second question is, is the future-proofing aspect, right? How can we set up the, the residents of the town, maybe specifically also younger ones? With, with, uh, you know, something to get excited about. And I'm going back to the discussion we had about some of the vandalism that we experienced and the speeding ride younger people that, um. Apparently lack a bit of a perspective and maybe the meeting house could be a place for them. I don't know how or so, but I think that there's a. That there's no place for such people in the town at this point, I think. And I think we, we often forget maybe the younger generation. So these, those are my thoughts.
Yes, uh, I, I have to agree with you. I'm going to approach your second question first and, and I think Bruce will come to it and Sam will also make time in. That we do need to educate the kids and give them an outlet for their, uh, energies and, 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 uh. Time that they have, downtime that they have. And if we can have a community center, uh, set up in some form. And to have some more organized, uh, programs here in town, whether it be boys scouts, girls scouts, four age, things of that sort in a community center, that would be great. Um, and try to bring the younger people into a more of a community situation. As far as your first question, Brooklyn does not have a store, a post office, a police department. Uh, we don't have any library. We don't have any of those types of, uh, programs. What we do have are, you know, uh, uh, pristine environment. We have, uh, good roads. We have, uh. Coliques scenes, we have, uh, nice, good people. And, and one of the things that I think our select board has been talking about as far as our infrastructure would be to, to, uh, we, we. To, you know, continue with those services, whether it be to continue to improve our roads and bridges. Um, uh, and that might be to, we're talking about purchasing some equipment so that we can do that. We don't have any equipment in town. Other than a nineteen eighty-something, uh, greater. We just got a, a leaf blower with a grant. To clean out culverts, but other than that, we don't have a wheelbarrow. We have a few chainsaws and a few weed wrappers, correct? We don't have, we don't have a ressun. We have a lot of supply needs that since, you know, we're staying. At least I am in town and, and, and I would like to see, you know, to have that foundation and that infrastructure.
That is, that is totally in scope of ARPA in my, to my mind as well. Yeah.
Bruce, if you want to.
Sure, you mentioned that, that community helping youth, especially in light of what's been going on around town. Years ago, when we started working on the meeting house, it was my initial idea to use the, uh, use the addition. For that reason, whether in the afternoons, you had a monitor, you have computers in there or. There's so much that can be done with those, I call them two buildings because you have the sanctuary and you have the addition. And the addition can be used, it's, it's large. I mean, you can, and now we are here. So it could be used for expanding, um. Uh, benefits for youth rather than having them right around on Saturday night going crazy. What they do.
If you do decide to explore that idea, you may talk to some people in Mar, Marlboro, uh, the Marlboro Community Center. Go to their website, uh, Lauren Poster is, uh, the head of that. Uh, that started as a church. It's still as a church, seasonal church, but the community center is down, down in the. Base, first, first, first floor. It's not a basement, first floor. But, uh, it was a, I'll mention, it was a preschool at one time, but now we've set up our first public library there. In the past five years and we, we have the food shop there and we have a, basically a Cracker Barrel thing on Saturdays for people hanging out. They come and, uh, you know, coffee and whatever it is, they could, free donation and then people can pick up their eggs there. Or, uh, you know, it, it's, it's really becoming quite a thing. And I know I'm going to make a presentation at that Saturday. Uh, this Saturday on the Marlboro Fair, the next one I'll be there. Uh, to, uh, to, you know, ask, ask, answer questions about, uh, fiber and so forth about the connection. So I, I do recommend it because I know I've seen in the past five years or over that, that's really become a very vital part of the town. And Marlboro is, of course, larger than your town, but it's a very similar kind of, uh, opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
And what happens? We're kind of drawing people in it now.
Yeah, yeah, and it's all kinds of people. And then people spray their artwork there and, and their crafts. Uh, and there's historical stuff there, uh, displayed. So I think, you know, anything, uh, anything that. Any ideas that people come up with, if you'd curate them. It's really important for the vitality of like communities to have that kind of. Opportunity to talk to each other and see, and see how we're doing.
Uh, I'm going to see, Dan, how are you online? Did you have anything that you would like to contribute or are you waiting for an R F P discussion?
Um, I'm, I'm mostly just listening, but, um, I've really enjoyed this discussion. Um, and, uh, I certainly agree that, uh, you know, there's a role for the meeting house possibly and. Um, you know, being a place where people can, uh, young or old, either one or both can gather and, you know. Um, uh, maybe provide some sort of an outlet for, uh, some of the, uh. You know, unspent energy in town or the, or the misspent energy in town. Um, but, uh, anyway, it's, uh, I don't have anything specific to offer at the moment, but. Um, but, uh, I appreciate the discussion.
All right. And, uh, the other, Dan, anything else that you would like to add as we move on through our agenda this evening?
No, thank you.
All right. Well, again, you have my email address. If you would like to get more involved, please let me know. I'd be glad to, uh. Entertain, put you more.
Yes, in a specific, and as Don can say, you, you will really get connected with a lot of different people of very interesting backgrounds. All around this communication union district. I've got, you know, I knew a lot of people at schools. But there's a whole other world out there of people, different professions, it's all up there on our board.
I know, right to the.
Well, we're going to have it, that's right. Well, you, you go right by it. That'll be the place.
I, I'd just like to say, I, I am of the opinion that. This D V fiber is so far ahead of the other areas of the state because of the leadership. And the commitment of the people that are, that are doing this. Although not formally a member. Uh, I do log in and I do keep track of it and the peace that seems to be maintained and the apparent. Involvement of the volunteers to make it work is, is really commendable and thank you very much. I, I hope you can thank them.
But this has been a wonderful, it's been a wonderful experience and it's a long way to go and we have to have the. The, the aspiration to, uh, you know, get this inspiration accomplished.
Can you not get into the public service board immediately?
Uh, we will, uh, if we become a voice, if we, if we become a tele, if we become a voice, if we, if we offer voice over in. Telephones, then we have a different F C C regulation and, and P U C. But otherwise, it's, it's really an unregulated industry. Cell service and fiber are really. Unregulated. The only thing that's regulated about cell service is the frequency that they have to bid on, you know, to. To be able to communicate on their frequency. Now, the one issue about light is nobody has. Uh, proprietary rights to light. Light and, and I'm a, I'm a retired quidditch teacher too, you know, so light is carrying the message by the frequency. Similar to a radio wave because the light wave is similar to the radio wave. It's just the light has probably received and, you know, our brains don't get radio waves to that. But, uh, but so, so the light, each of those colors, you can imagine the rainbow, each of those colors is a different frequency. And that can carry a different signal. That's why, as Dan said here, that it really is an unlimited. Capacity of information. That's why I complain that it's future proof and the limiting factor is the ability of my little computer to. Cultivate all the information as fast as it can, you know. So, so it isn't going to be that now my computer is saying, hey, give me more information. I got, I got to freeze it.
Probably.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and so, so, you know, and, and, and that's why, uh, you know. There's such a capacity and opportunity because the, the fiber is, is a hair. You know, it's a diner of the hair. You don't have to have a bigger hose. So we're, we're, our fiber backbone has a hundred and forty-four fibers. And that whole thing only, only about five eighths.
Five eighths.
Well, when you're ready to distribute some marketing information.
Yeah.
Uh, please reach out and we would be glad to help accomplish that for you in this endeavor. Uh, one of the things we did do in Brookline, uh, not too long ago, well, within the past year. Was we do have a Wi-Fi hotspot in our parking lot, uh, right here underneath one of the lights. Yeah, so you sit, you can sit in the parking lot and access password free, uh, the Wi-Fi. We found that there, you know, when the schools were closed and kids.
Yeah.
That was something.
On Saturday night.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but we will be moving on to our agenda. You are welcome to say however, I understand.
I'm going to go to my next video. Yeah, when I was, uh.
Right, very good. So it's that actually, obviously twenty-five, so we're below, but, but still moving along. Under New Justice, um, Bill's number, Bruce mentioned, asked if I could just add the agenda. I'd like to talk about purchasing some of the tree work that came down. Mark, could you tell us a little bit about what you're interested in?
Sure, so.
You might want to sit in the microphone chair, would you mind?
No, I won't.
All right, that seems to work. Okay, here.
Okay, so.
Give him the talking stick.
Yes.
We did some accomplishments while the rented excavator was here to, uh, remove some unwanted, uh. Trees, um, at the Brooklyn Elementary School daycare building. Um, so in the back, it was talking near, near future of possible, um. The solar powered panels as well as, uh, safety hazards to remove some trees. So with the equipment and time, uh, I had, uh, removed, um, four. Trees, uh. Three of pine and, and one was a large cherry tree. So with the removal down, I, uh, did some of the cleanup. Decalled with the machinery and I, uh, turned the trees into logs. For sale. And I forwarded the logs to a, an area where these logs could be loaded onto a log truck to be removed. So, I wanted to bring to the board, uh, an offer. To purchase the, the wood, the tree logs, um, to be resunned. The tree logs um to be re-sawn into lumber. I. Used a measure stick to tally board footage. Um approximately. Little over two thousand board feet altogether that was salvaged out of the trees for lumber. Um. So the cherry logs totaled the value of uh the total board footage of seven hundred and ninety-five feet in four logs. Um the pine logs, I, I accumulated eleven logs out of the pine. The total board footage accumulated was twelve hundred and eighty feet. So between the seven ninety-five and twelve hundred and eighty, two thousand and seventy-five board feet. Uh the cherry logs have more value than pine logs, um in hardwood. So I did some math. Uh and I'd like to offer the town of Brookline four hundred and thirty dollars of value for the. Fifteen logs that are landing at school. This is minus the, the treetops, this is just uh.
The log, so it's four hundred and thirty.
Four hundred and thirty dollars.
For the fifteen logs, which are leather pine and four are cherry. How does the board wish to proceed on this? I, I, I need to say, let's table it and put it for a vote at the next meeting, it would mean that the wood would sit there for another two weeks, but is that something because we don't have an hold on?
That's, that's fine, they'll, they'll throw another, that's no problem.
Is there something you would like me to add to the next agenda for a vote, you'll have some time to sneak on it and, and think about it?
No, I'm, I'm sitting here with a lot of different feelings going through my mind. Mark is the person who actually took them down and operated the equipment to enable it to be safely done. Uh and it would be so easy to say, yes, we accept the bid, on the other hand, I can sense that, you know, as is typical of any governmental agency, there's. Other opinions about that and I, I, I would feel awkward uh in one sense. Uh oh, someone alleging that we gave an individual favoritism. It almost think, seems like the fair thing to do is perhaps uh. Submit an RFP or the, the things and, and uh so get another deal or make an announcement on the uh service of the town that. There are trees and if anyone's to submit a bid, so that it's, it's not viewed as uh favoritism, I know one of the. Issues that came up when I first moved to town is there was a SLIP board member who had equipment, who repaired roads in town and. When I'd be at a various uh uh get together once or another, I'd hear negative comments about the individual. He actually saved the town money, but it was the concept of being a closed system where that person did that and, and so I, I, I feel it that. You know, as much as I, I really feel it probably ought to be something that, that Mark should be allowed to do, on the other hand, I feel awkward and subject to criticism.
It's not, it's not making me feel awkward, I understand and I respect that, that responsibility and think quite seriously.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you at all, so and I, and I encourage you in what you're saying. Gotta keep in mind, this is under the purchase policy, correct?
Oh yeah, purchase, we're, we're not buying anything, we're selling it, something happened to the, to the purchase policy.
So it's just a matter of being transparent, I think is important, I uh but you know, for, for my deal, I said. Get it out of here, this is not my deal, it's the town's deal, and I think being transparent and opening it up and maybe tabling. My first and see if anybody, that anybody else wants to make a quote, but not. Get it out of here.
Right, and this is an awkward thing in financing.
I mean, sure.
Anyone who's watching this is gonna know what your bid is.
If anybody would know, did it offer.
So that, you know, it's normally, we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna ruin the competitiveness of the name of the item. Uh I would suggest that if we do make it uh through the board and the service, the wonderful service that we have. Uh available, let me not quote what is that this means.
That's correct.
Right, what I'd like to do is I'd like to uh.
So it's something that's a four hundred and twenty-five dollars, I'm gonna be like.
I'd like to, I'd like to.
Could I make a, a remark out of turn?
Right ahead, I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, you've been around me a whole lot.
Well, it, it seems to me that you could think about this in terms of like the purchase policy uh amounts. This is a very small amount and it does considerable cost proportionately in trying to deal with it. Uh externally, like putting it up for an auction or something is what it amounts to. And it seems to me that even if it was a thousand dollars, you'd probably be saving money to just say, okay. You know, if it was more than that, it'd be more, it's sort of like a purchase policy in reverse. Where you have to do an RFP for something over a certain amount, right?
Well, what I, what I would like to.
That was all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you for that, anyway.
What I, what I like to suggest is I would like to send out through the email service a brief summary of tonight's meeting, including the discussion with the DV fiber and how grateful I am. For the continuing participation in our community members and I can also highlight some of the achievements that have been going on this year, including our, our cleanup and the, and the knotweed and. And so on and so forth, and the trees coming down and say that there isn't, there are trees for sale, if someone is interested, please contact me.
There you are.
Alright, and we will put it on the agenda for the next meeting and at the next meeting I will share if there was any contact and we'll go from there, but. Thank you, that was very generous. XY will follow up with the uh s- uh email summary, email to the residents. Between that and I also wanted to, yeah, okay.
There's another aspect of this that I didn't mention and that is, I have no idea what that other entity that I'm gonna refer to. Who did work for the town and actually saved the town money, experienced on a personal basis, the opinion that some other people might have had, so. I'm looking at this in another way, which is I would not wanna see you experience any adverse remarks.
Right.
Because you innocently did something, so I'm looking at both sides.
And you're an physician, you have to point your finger at the select one.
Yeah, no, I, I realize this situation and I understand that maybe somebody would want to. To pay more for it and if they want to lose more for it, then yeah, I don't know.
Alright, well, thank you and I'll move forward off of that, next I'd like to move on in the interest of. Getting here, uh Brookline Meeting House has an event on this Friday, September ninth with the Brookline Meeting House Committee, including such uh Roger Aldy, Mr. and Mrs. Cutler, who made a generous donation to, to the meeting house. And other longtime residents such as uh Mr. Ren, Mr. Wellren, Mr. Osgood, and the meeting will be at the meeting house starting around four P M on a Friday. If anyone is interested in coming in, we'll have just some simple talk things and, and then uh. Uh Roger Aldy's done some research on the community and we hope to be able to inform Mr. Cutler, whose family, resident, uh helped to build that church, so uh it is.
That's a good thought.
That uh people like this kind of experience.
Mm-hmm, that's a nice event, I, I.
And one of the reasons why that, well, it's usually the community.
Who knows about this, is it perhaps Julie's or?
Uh it's, it's not, we did not necessarily make it into a public event because of the limitations on our facilities and the restroom and we all have a.
Okay.
So we're, we're looking at keeping it ten, ten or fifteen people at the most and if that's us committee and a couple of residents. Having to show up or workers who have done vending jobs, so, so uh I, I have nothing, that was not made as a public. Okay.
Just a night beat.
Yes, alright, next item, next item is the uh request proposal for the Brookline Meeting House Foundation repairs. We received today and I hope the selectmen have time to review that, um we worked with Carrie and Mr. Blue Coop. Um and Lee and, and trying to come up with a scope for the foundation rebuild so that it's scope of work projects so that it would be sufficient enough to. Um uh help in the receiving of a grant for this foundation from the Division of Urban Store Preservation. Um and so in trying to work with this, we were doing diagrammings and we changed a couple of ways that we looked at it and we had a new. Did you get your re, your?
Yeah, I still have a problem.
Okay, so let's go over, Bruce, you, you had to come start around the RFP.
You helped me a lot, thank you for sending me all of today, and I was coming home for three hours of splitting wood, so I was doing the best I can with it. Uh but what I don't understand is first of all, the dirt, I don't have. Uh the.
Or beams.
Yeah, the beam, which is made out of, out of concrete, how many are there, is it just one and where is the position, I have no idea.
It says in.
Yeah, you look at the dots, you draw the line between the dots, there's a foundation. Where the, where the, the church is here and the addition, I don't know if they call it the ax, the wood structure, whatever, you go to the south. Uh west wall of that uh wood structure where it comes together with a brick building. You go down thirty inches below grade.
Right.
When you hit that, when you hit that, yeah. Put a level on it and just keep going around the, the east side and the other side, okay, so that it's a giant shaped U. At constant depth, once you reach that thirty inches on that point, below grade, okay? That trench is to be twenty inches wide. Because that's what the beam is. Twenty inches wide, we already know it's gonna be thirty inches below grade. Okay, so the first layer that's going into that trench is twenty inches wide of three-quarter inch crust stone for a depth of fourteen inches.
Right.
Okay, and that's gonna go all the way around in the bottom of that trench.
Okay, so the trench is complete, okay.
Correct, the, the beam that's gonna be poured is gonna be poured with one pouring in a U shape on the east side, uh the south side. Where the current entry is, you know, the, the, there, and, and again around.
Complete.
Where the, complete, all the way around, okay, and it's gonna be in the middle of that, uh half inch rebar to. Double side by side in the center of that uh concrete beam. And I'm suggesting in the, the, look, research that I did essentially says that at a minimum. That uh concrete should be of a three thousand pounds per square inch uh res- resilience strength.
Sixty-five, yeah, so that beam is gonna go all the way around?
Correct.
Okay, okay, I see you, okay, and then with the plan is to build up where it's from depending on, depending on the. Depending on which side of buildings.
Correct, I mean, on the south side.
Sure, it's confusing, I think, the did you hear a beat, it sounded like there was just one beam that's only twenty inches wide, I was like.
One continuous.
Oh, oh, all the way around, okay, and then depending on the side, whether you're gonna build it up or add field stone. And, and that was mortared if I remember right, if I remember that correctly, uh the, the above grade east and north walls are to be mortared, made of stone, so the mayor's.
So that's on the exterior, that's on the exterior of those two sides.
Okay, so you're saying that he's gonna build a wall and the exterior is gonna be covered in it, doesn't he?
No, no.
The exterior is gonna have mortared field stone on.
No, no, uh according to the, the uh comments that Carrie made, the only side that is not gonna be stone is the south side. And that is going to maintain the drips that is there, what Carrie suggested is that there be on top of that. Beam, uh in an appropriate place on that beam, to be in line with the stone foundation of the original building. There's gonna be constructed a wall which is gonna be extending ten feet above grade because it's just uh ten inches, I'm sorry.
That's.
And, and, and that wall is gonna be constructed such that the inner half of that is going to be four inch concrete block. Uh extending from the existing church part to the corner, to the southeast corner. And on the exterior of that, uh mortared to that is gonna be the four inch below grade with grit. The other two sides are gonna be all field stone and there's no concrete block that's going beyond that southeast corner. From that brick and concrete block section, the rest is gonna be solid stone.
Make it look the same.
The way he expressed that originally. Made us think that their concrete block with a stone base up was gonna be on the east and north wall, but that's not what he intended.
No, because, no, he, he even said to me, uh, it doesn't matter, I understand.
Okay.
As far as the drip edge and how that all through, yeah, I'm not concerned about that.
Well, the difference, the difference we talked when we were there was that the east wall of that has dips and valleys which, which approach twenty-three inches in one spot where the, it's worn away. And access, so when I mentioned that to Carrie, he said we should put a berm against those deeper current surfaces. Such that when the finished product is done, the, the, the wall has been brought in and when you look at where the ground approaches the building, it's gonna be roughly continuous, it's so. Ten inches of material, brick on one side, stone on the other, so that, and then it's seeded and so forth, and that's what that says.
Okay, I understand, it's thirty inches below grade, you're, you're a pro.
Well, I, I was gonna just bring that up, go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead, I'd be curious.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Not a, I've heard it's a, you know, oh yeah, before, yeah, well, you know, I, I did, curious. Yeah, I am, I am getting.
We should bring that up because.
I did, I, I asked him about that, I, in the sense, I said, you know, most areas in this part of the country are recommended to have a forty-eight inch. Below rate.
But, but well, that's right.
That was the reason why there's fourteen inches of crust stone, because the movement. Of what's gonna happen if the cross hits to the thirty inches is that there's room for movement and you got a, a fourteen, fourteen, is it fourteen or sixteen inch thick? Concrete slab with rebar and the rebar added to the concrete of the three thousand. I went on the internet and asked what is, what can be acceptable, as long as it has the rebar in it and it's close to. That three to thirty-six cen- thirty to thirty-six inches, that is deemed to be acceptable in this area.
And also, and that's.
Quick question.
And that thought is all the lack and duty myself, I believe that whole place is on sand anyway.
Well, I think that's the other additional thing, you mentioned that uh when we met at the building to review it and, and that would probably. If it were long or compacted clay, like it is at my house, that would, it would, the moisture in that would impact trees and. But in this case, where Peter is sand, uh Carrie did just to, to, to further what Carrie had suggested was. When he tested and looked at the septic tank.
Yeah.
He said it was all sand.
No, I'll lose. How much, how deep is it, you're gonna go with the stone?
Fourteen inches, up around thirty inches. So the bottom is thirty, you put in fourteen inches and then a sixteen on that brings a level of five.
Now, witness what, what happens in a city in a hundred and thirty years. Okay.
Not much, right, so.
So I think we should, I think you might.
Alright, so I, uh if there's, I'm, we continue, I'm gonna make a motion, I mean, continue any discussion at that appropriate point. I'd like to make a motion to place the uh request proposal, so we'll work for the foundation, you know, beneath the annex of the Brookline Meeting House. And we rattled our reformer for this Saturday, uh as presented in the revised, not in order, in the revised. Nine on the nine seven. Twenty-two, okay, take it or, did I have a second? Seconded by Stan Noda, continued discussion, any other continued discussion about placing the RFP as presented with the additional details.
Okay.
Okay, my only comment would be I'd like to thank everybody who worked together to make sure that we are apples to apples and oranges to oranges, we understand what's going on. And that we are very excited to see this progress and hopes that we can get uh a grant that will help to uh accomplish this project. And hopes that we can get uh a grant that will help to uh accomplish this project.
You're here, that's quite serious.
Yeah.
Given that what is there now. This is quite the upgrade, so I'm I'm excited about it if we get the grant.
And yet still maintain appearance to match what's there. That's that's really good.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's Car- Carrie's. I don't mean this is bad, like Carrie's an idiot about that. He wants you, he wants it to be a storage property.
Any other discussion?
None.
Do you have none, all those in favor of approving the RFP as presented on nine seven twenty twenty two? Uh for the RFP, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Be it known that the uh RFP will be published, unanimous approval from the select board. Thank you everyone again who has helped in getting this uh fat- had this project to move forward. Okay. Um.
May I make your comment about number D?
D, yes.
Uh. At this point, the only reason to hold a discussion and or vote on this is for. Uh a meeting which will be held in, I think it was October. This particular issue was discussed at the Wyndham Regional Commission meeting a week ago or so. And it was uh it was out of the uh, I forget how many attendees there were, maybe Peter can remember. There might have been twenty four people there, Peter was also an independent at that meeting.
Oh, okay.
And there were, I think, two.
Well, there was, uh it was a quorum, I think it was twenty seven towns.
Okay, that's right, that's right, you're very fair and wise. And I think there were two, maybe three people who did not vote in favor of doing this, the rest of us did. The process, however, where this may become helpful, just so we know we're voting on here, is that after the vote is taken. There's a need by by either law or regulation for Wyndham Regional to allow thirty five days to elapse. For anyone in the general community of the county who objects to this from having to uh make their thoughts known. And if I'm not mistaken, thirty days after that. The Wyndham Regional Commission holds a meeting regarding the feedback that they've got, maybe none and maybe an objection. I believe that the committee, the the representatives from the towns vote on it again to finalize a decision. Did I express that right, Peter?
Well, I'm as new to it as you are, but I think so.
Okay. Thank you. So the only, so the the initial vote, which I had brought up at the time. Not fully sure that they were, but looking like they ran or asked for a decision and other than us holding a special meeting, it wasn't gonna happen. But what discussion on the cuff, so to speak, when I ra- raised the issue. And we exchanged, I think, a brief uh eh uh discussion about it. It seemed like there was merit and benefit to sharing expenses and services with Wyndham Regional. I did not hear anybody here at the table say, nope, don't want it, not important, not necessary. Particularly in light of the fact that before that we became aware of it, someone from another nearby town asked us if we are interested in sharing. Services and expense with Wyndham Regional.
So that was the, that was the the hint, okay, somebody, somebody knew something before something was known.
Exactly, exactly. Either they got inside scoop, uh or they were asked, how would you feel about it? I don't know.
Ah, ah, ah. Alright.
But, so it's already just voted on, but if if we wanna look at this in terms of. Should someone object to that and wish to uh cause, which will happen anytime, there's gonna be a second vote. If you wanna vote on that vote.
Bring it to our.
Bring it to our, you can either wait until then or we could say, in the event that there's an objection, the town of Brookline does hereby approve. Operating in the fashion that was approved by the majority of the membership on the uh the last Wynd- Wyndham Regional Commission meeting.
I might have you make the motion at that point. However, I am gonna say this, this is a Wyndham Regional Commission's changing its bylaws.
Right.
They're changing their bylaws. Some of the main things that they've changed is the uh to help communities. Municipalities enter into service agreements or cooperative purchasing agreements, which would be a new uh. Way of doing work and also um. Uh while the, about more involvement of the Wyndham, additional responsibilities that the Wyndham Regional Commission would like to take on in assisting towns. In in managing their local government, basically. Um there are some changes into the bylaws that that they had highlighted in red, but.
It's like a mini BLCT.
Okay. Is it like a mini BLCT? I don't know, they, no, they're more legal, this is more.
No.
It, well, they're they're all legal in a way. BLCT mission is to help small municipalities negotiating the statutes of the state of Vermont. Wyndham Regional Commission's main role and purpose is for regional planning. And there's, I don't know how many in the state, but roughly between nine and eighteen or something like that, commissions throughout the state.
I see.
And and their main focus, their grants are all involved with uh conducting business uh. Uh in the in the guise of planning and roadwork, uh those highway stuff. Uh town administration, all the things that assist in the towns in interchanging the planning process is what they're all about. So that's all this, that's what their mission was.
So would you like to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, sure. Um I would make a motion that this board um. Consider voting, make a vote. To approve the multi-town structure of Wyndham Regional Commission. To perform, to enter into contracts for services, uh funding, uh management, et cetera. Of planning type things that are under the guise of Wyndham Regional. So that in the event. Upon the thirty five day exposure to the general public in Wyndham County. Should there be any adverse input to the plan of multi-town involvement in contracts and such. That I as a representative of the town of Brookline at a subsequent meeting thirty five day, thirty days after expiration of thirty five days. Can express the desires of the town of Brookline regarding uh multi municipality participation. By uh voting to approve or continue the vote, approve the vote to um allow municipalities in Wyndham County. To participate in multi municipal agreements and processes and so on. That's a law, isn't it?
I wanna mention.
Way of saying.
I wanna mention that uh. Uh I think a lot of this arises because. People are are not showing up for public service. And small towns are not having uh quorums. And the WRC is also losing very significant people. And John Bennett is gonna be retiring and they can't find anybody to replace him and they have to outsource that to consultants. So there's a lot in the wind. If I understood you. Uh. You're moving to support the WC, the WRC. In their vote, in their upcoming vote to enter into contracts with municipalities. The planning contracts with municipalities. Um I I'm not sure you need to put the rest of that in there, anticipating opposition and so forth.
I agree. I agree, Peter.
So just to enter into a planning contracts.
Okay.
And and I I will.
Multiple, multiple municipality contracts.
I I will second that motion. Any further discussion?
They're called a full municipality planning contracts. Good.
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
Uh all those in favor of approving the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye. Okay, we will support the Wyndham Regional Commission bylaw up updates uh as presented in their final one. Alright, thank you so again for helping us with that. Uh item E, I'm gonna table this at this time, but we do know this at Wyndham Regional Commission. This uh so uh has services and grants and we are looking for some administrative helping. And this is something that um we'd like to pursue uh go into the later nature of tonight's meeting. Um I think we need to table this tonight. Okay, uh six the uh committee here. Be for the next meeting. Alright, we're gonna move to the uh old business very quickly. Um you had a question about the office cleaning services. Uh I'd like to uh make a motion that we continue with our higher uh uh scheduling. Uh for green valley carpet cleaning to come to the town hall. Once a month versus once every eight weeks. It's a public building, we have just gone through a pandemic. And for forty dollars a session, um that he deep cleans the bathrooms, washes and fan dries all floor. Which is limiting the amount of water because this floor will warp. Cleans all surfaces, especially public countertop, conference tables and machinery, all high touch surface areas like door knobs and light switches, the all desk areas. Walls will be dusted as needed and cleaning inside windows as needed. Um be able to accomplish this on a regular schedule in an hour, which would be forty dollar. Uh we moved in an hour and a half when we came back last few weeks ago because we had two, three months worth or four months worth of gap. Uh there was just a non coming every month, it gets thrown off the schedule, so I think. So I'd like to make a motion that.
May I, may I? Oh, sorry, may I say per present contract?
Present contract, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I, motion would be to hire on a monthly basis office cleaning. If I can have a second, we can discuss further. Bruce is seconded by Bruce. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to go on record as saying, there's not an employee in the town of Brookline who gets forty dollars an hour. That having been said. And it seems to be a little bit, I view it as a little bit of a slight insult to have people paying someone for forty dollars. When they're doing just as important a job. That having been said, I will acquiesce in it and voting in behalf of it. Simply because it's a lot of work for the amount of money we're gonna spend on this over the course of a year.
And also.
To do it in a way that's competitive. Well, you're mistaken. You know, we could look at any job in this office and say it's a service. You know, it's a governmental service, municipal service. And and you know, it's a little bit, I think, uh if someone's doing a job that might be similar to yours and you're responsible for issuing them a check. For X dollars an hour, which is probably double what you're getting, it just feels funny, I would think. But again, I, this is a once a month thing and uh it it, I suspect if we put it up a bit. Unfortunately, probably it's gonna end up being something close to that. So I will, I will go, I will, I am in favor of contemplating it with that having been said.
And I'd like to add that when you break it down, it comes out to about two dollars a day for the month. Uh a five day week and that um it it's it's a difficult thing to ask for a town clerk, assistant town clerk to continue to do that. Which they've done for many years, so I do think we have to start hiring out some of these uh.
Yeah.
Uh so.
Sorry, who's seconded?
I believe I, uh, Mark.
Bruce seconded it and now we're in discussion. So any other discussion?
Just going back to the original intent that we had in the spring, which is we have a town clerk, we have an assistant town clerk. That's their job, that's what they should be doing. They shouldn't be doing dumpsters and cleaning buildings and running around house school, schoolhouse and cleaning that. So this is good, I I'm very comfortable with having this.
If we have volunteers, that would be one thing, but we don't.
We don't.
Obviously, whatever.
Yeah.
Alright, here you.
If if I weren't doing so many other things in addition to this job, I'd do it.
I would too, because I used to do that all the time, clean houses, but I don't say.
I would too, I would too, if you'd be tired.
Alright, um all those in favor of approving monthly cleaning at a charge of uh forty dollars a service sign. Uh. I'm sorry, the set, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, I will notify that we will have a scheduled cleaning once a month for that. Okay, uh next item, old business. Alright, uh. The Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement Service?
Yes.
Alright, uh versus Paychecks Retirement Plan. Stan, I think you did an awful lot of research on on um. This program right now. How would you like to approach this at this hour?
Okay, Bruce, good question and I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. I have done research on both. Uh and one is extremely expensive, but very easy. The other one is uh uh appears to be relatively easy, but is a little, a little at the initial phase. Uh a little more complicated and a lot less expensive. Uh I guess the bottom line, I want to say, the issues are too complex to discuss at this type of meeting. I suggest that between now and the next select board meeting, that we have a work be, so we're not taking the public's time and our time. Uh and at eight, nine, close to nine oh two, to talk about the details of two programs and make a decision on it. So I would say table it and uh work at, uh I am probably another two to three days. Of exchange between the two entities to come out with a firm solution. And in fact, there may be, after Mark sees what he's gotta do to get involved, he may wanna. Put our heads together, select board and Mark, to come up with an alternative to what was proposed.
Got it.
Uh an August now.
We might have to renegotiate something or another.
Uh but end up where the same, the same principle. So that nobody is is uh losing anything, so to speak, okay? So uh and I will drop, I spoke earlier with Mark before the meeting started about giving him some of the paperwork. For the process that would be probably the most advantageous for him and the town. So that he has a feel of what he's gonna be confronted with, should we go that way. One of them is is not being honest and open. They're saying one thing to Melissa, they say one thing to, the same thing to me, and when they put it in writing, it's changed.
Oh, jeez.
So that makes it very. And that to me has an impact and they will not put anything in writing. So I uh I.
Who's won?
I I don't wanna.
Say it.
At an open meeting, but that's, that's something that we, when we get to the work, if you could look at the merits of each. But I would feel uncomfortable Mark being involved. I let him, I will discuss with him what we encountered. So you can say whether you feel even comfortable dealing with that, but I think the facts will direction you to, if you wish to go to a formal program. To the Neighbors.
Okay.
So I'm tabling item seven B to the next select board meeting. In the meanwhile, we can schedule a uh a time on the nineteenth or twentieth of September. Cause I'm away for a week, you're away, then you're.
I'm, but I'm more away from twenty third to thirty.
Okay, so the nineteenth or twentieth is uh, I'll have to reach out after this to see which night they would work to have. Sit down so we can look at this, the details of what Stan has collected. One day work better than the other, would you like to schedule it now, would you like to do it now, hot, four and nine thirty?
I'll do Tuesdays and Thursdays, Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
I'm wondering if with with Doc being away next week and and you're gonna leave me by the twenty third?
Yeah, the thirty.
Okay, so it's possible to the nineteenth or twentieth, or you're gonna, you're.
You can.
I, either one is fine with me.
Okay, Tuesday is better for you, you said?
Yes.
Twentieth, what time would you like to?
Early, please.
Ten?
I think someone killed the whole day, cause I've been working for the hours.
Alright, I will uh set up an appointment for Tuesday, September twentieth. At ten AM. At town hall.
I could take forever.
To review the.
Uh longer than you make that. I would plan on an hour.
Yeah. Okay, alright, so we.
Going to a good cause.
That's right.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to the reports for supervisor Mark.
We're here late, Mark, we're gonna get it.
Okay, uh Mark?
Uh, I have sixty seconds.
Appreciate it.
So the eggs container went away, but I believe I feel like there was a lot of good uh work done with it. Uh approximately, had to go back through my paperwork and tally, but. Uh we did somewhere between thirteen, fourteen over uh added in. Uh summer new location, summer exchange now, totally rusted, no bottoms, much needed. Uh summer new location, summer exchanged out, totally rusted, no bottoms, much needed. Upgraded bigger sizes. Um we also accomplished a lot of mowing. Um which I told the meeting back a lot way away. We got a lot of road segments done and again, I haven't tallied the the footage uh to see how many segments, but I feel like uh we're up to par with the state for this year. And we also were able to uh do a little bit of pre-work behind the school with the machine, which I felt was a big saving. I still have lots of planning to continue to do with road improvements and needs. Um I had taken the grader out and uh Pucky Mountain Road had suffered the lengthiest time without grading due to busy with the excavator. So soon as the excavator went away, I went out and uh scraped uh Pucky Mountain Road completely. I also hit narrow drive while I was down there. And I also did a touch up on Whitney Hill. So the roads throughout the whole summer had had lots of tension. Um and the one thing I wanted to talk about, and it's on my repeated road checks and travels. Like I say, there's, there's three types of uh trees removals and that I do in town. And I try to prioritize the most hazardous ones first. Maybe there's room for almost a continuous tree removal uh system to have in town. And um each year, trees die that and uh we have some larger trees that are have reached the point where they're very fragile. If they are bumped, the the tops can come down or during a storm, they drop thick limbs. We have uh four or five of those hovering over the town highways that when I remove a tree, I tend to cut right down close to the ground and tip them over. And I can only do that if there's no power lines or no structures that I might damage. Uh so if I can take it down from the ground level, I'm allowed to do it under the town's safety and uh job description. The other way the trees come down is with the power company. If I can work with the power company, if the tree is close enough, has to be within a certain amount of footage range qualified for their uh you know, to help them out as well as us. And so they will do that if I call it a fix into their category. And then the other way is hiring a tree service to come in safely, lay the tree down. So a number of the trees that I, I'm gonna say I don't wanna dare tackle uh need to come down. And I was, I wanted to ask the board if we could hire a tree service for a one day tree removal. And uh with that in mind, um I have more than enough trees in line if we hire a tree removal service to come in to keep them busy for more than a day, but we do have one full day. The last time we hired it out, uh it was, started out around two thousand dollars. And then the price, the next time was twenty five. And I understand now that it's in the three thousand dollar a day range for the whole crew and all the equipment insurance, brains. So I was wondering how the board felt about uh, I haven't checked yet because I wanted to check with the board first and then I will uh if, so reach on with the call and find out the availability of purchase price, but um would the board feel like using a one day tree service in the approximate range of three thousand dollars or how did the board wanna? Do you want to um make a list of trees, put them out for bid? Uh you know, again, the purchase policy is there. If we go with what we've done in the past, three thousand, it's still under purchase policy inside. But uh you know, that's like a year now. How you feel?
Where is, where is it? This is under the forty three thousand dollars that we spend during the year for purchase stuff.
The YJ in the town book with their uh uh contract, it would fall under contract services. How much have we spent? Any idea how much we spent so far on the?
I have not seen a budget. The latest balance sheet that we sent to us last week shows that uh for, this was interesting and I don't quite know where it came from, but for for the first two months of this fiscal year, according to the income and expenses, there have been highway expenses, expenses totaling ninety two thousand three hundred and twenty nine dollars and forty five cents.
Including weight.
And the balance in that highway, it was only forty two thousand dollars. And I, I, I don't know if that ninety, ninety two, three twenty nine includes the sixty four thousand dollars that we spent on Grassy Brook Road along the highway or not. I know we've got eleven thousand dollars to spend with Allstate, which is gonna be another issue coming up lately. Uh so I would all suggest that we confer with the assistant treasurer. See where we stand, look at what's outstanding and then maybe decide whether we've got enough room to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if that sounds good or not.
Yes, it does. Uh I, I'm feeling like that has to include the paving. Our fiscal year started over July first.
Right.
And it's no way we could spend, I'm not sure. For many things, there's certain budgets, the paving has its own budget.
Right, right.
You know.
Yeah, purchase stuff has a different budget.
Culverts have a certain budget. I know that I purchased uh culvert, um WW. Uh I, I bought in six culverts that uh valued thirty three hundred dollars. I purchased a pallet of asphalt coal patch in the bags to have in stock for pot holding.
Okay.
Uh that was with, with um sealer. It was like that, the bottles was like fifteen hundred dollars.
Well, this is isolated just a little.
For contract service.
Contract service.
Yeah.
Where are we at with that? That's, that's really.
I don't remember. And I know that we, we possibly purchased a lot of ditch stone.
Yeah, we got a lot of material there.
Something hey, this could all get kind of.
Alright, I'm gonna put it on the agenda to discuss at the next select board meeting. And meanwhile, if you wanted to look around and find out about scheduling and check on costs, that would be good and.
Check availability, the, the cost for uh the well free period.
Can I, can I delegate the checking with the treasurer? Because I think it's more timely and I might, I'm not gonna be available.
Chewie, we've got three hours.
Stan, you?
Uh yeah.
Alright, so would you just tell the treasurer about the contact services for, for that? That would be much appreciated. And if you don't mind, I'm just gonna throw this in here. We did receive a hydraulic study for, from Scott Jensen. And we are meeting um online. We're meeting in a conference call to discuss with FEMA and its representatives, the road commissioner, the road super manager, vice president, uh the uh this particular hydraulic study and install thirty six inch culvert. We're gonna be finding out some more information about what, what they're covering or not covering.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so we've already purchased these culverts and then was told by FEMA we, we had to have a hydraulic study before we installed.
Insulting, so we got that.
So the hydraulic study uh confirms that three foot diameter is the right size for the replacement. And this is where a year ago in July twenty, was it twenty ninth?
Twenty ninth, yeah.
Flood, the main part of the flood caused, they're not doing any, but.
Took out the pavement.
Took out the pavement.
On, on button now.
This one culvert was.
Alright, we're gonna roll up on that. Anything else or we're gonna move on because it's getting late?
No, I'm, I'm gonna stop right here.
Thank you, Martin. Did a wonderful job of the chief.
Yes.
Are you sure?
I couldn't believe how fast you got. It's like unbelievable. This guy's a master.
It was very heavy.
Not Sandy's the one the year before because you felt this one, you couldn't maneuver it.
Well, that, that three hundred and sixty degree risk. But, but still, I'm not gonna knock the machine.
That it has something permanent.
Yeah, that it does more than.
Alright, we're gonna move on out to Stan Nogba. You had some reporting that you can share with us on how to waste some grants, please?
Yes, there are some questions we had at the last two select boards about expenses and contracts, et cetera, with, when they're regional. Uh and there was a concern or, or in an interest in knowing, have we been reimbursed for expenses that we've incurred to date? Uh quarterly reports and some of the other things. So I tried to pin those down for this evening and you have some answers. Uh we can be reimbursed for Chris Campi for any of the expenses that we have incurred to date in this early phase of the salt and sand shed project. It will only be when we actually start the construction of the shed that the eighty twenty match scenario will apply. I have not, I am not aware that we have as a town applied for any reimbursement for the monies that were paid from the very start. Uh in terms of they being reimbursed a hundred percent. I have been involved with two billing periods and together they total roughly five hundred and fifty dollars. I think one's two hundred something, one's three hundred something. So they're, they're between two fifty and six hundred. And in an email that I received from uh uh Margot Dia, she has suggested that after the third quarter of this year, that we, when we pay that, that she then solicits at the state of Vermont for full reimbursement, what the town has paid uh through this year. So uh I would suggest that if we need to take a vote on it, that that sounds plausible. Every time she does something, she bills us on an hourly rate, which is up there. So uh for us to say do it, and she said, if you want me to do it now, I'll do it now. But I suggest to wait. And I think there's merit to that because we don't need to pay a hundred and twenty dollars for sixty dollars an hour, which is pretty darn close to what it is at that, rather than just paying sixty dollars. And, and we're not hurting for five hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, 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 right. We don't need to rush that down twice.
Right, so either by consensus or vote, I would suggest that we uh wait until after the third quarter, uh which will be um, I guess, starting October.
I don't think we need to have a vote to accept reimbursement.
Okay, well, but to act in the.
Yeah, I can, but you can bring it to our attention. I think that's, that's appropriate.
So that, so I followed up on that. We get a hundred percent reimbursement and then, and through the process that we just discussed, we can do that. Uh and I will follow up with her to ask if in fact, or and or Melissa to see if there's record, which indicates that we've been reimbursed in the past. Cause if we haven't been, then we might, we've got a couple of three thousand dollars that we could have come on our way.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Uh let's see. I know since I've been doing this in uh uh March, I, I'm not aware of the town having received any monies recently as a reimbursement. So it may be the larger number. Okay. Uh now, when Dot and I, so that's one issue. When Dot and I had a conversation with uh V-Trans and Wyndham Regional back late April, early May, and we were trying to figure out what this is gonna cost us, there was a, a comment made by, again, Marvogia that we're gonna have to renegotiate the contract. So after having attended the Wyndham Regional Commission meeting last week and hearing that, saying that they have contracts with each town for work performed, I asked them if there was in fact a management agreement between Brookline and Wyndham Regional that we're operating under in regard to the sand salt shed. Anything else you wanna keep to them? He says, yes. Well, I asked her, she did send me a copy of it today and it expired on June thirtieth of this year. So right now, we're operating without a contract. So we do need to renegotiate. The problem is this was five pages long and I only read the first page uh before I got other emails that needed to be responded. And so I don't have a summary for you as to uh what the fees totally were, how they operate, uh whether it's in fact a percentage of the amount of the garage cost. Remember we were talking about that back when? Uh there is a fee dollar amount, I think it was thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars that was to be paid at acceptance of the contract. Now, whether that has been paid, whether it's, I don't know. So there's a little bit I gotta look into.
Okay.
Okay, uh let's see, that was one, one. And I think that's it uh for that issue. That's, so the next issue is I have not heard anything from Allstate Construction on that eleven thousand dollar. Have you heard anything?
No, me and Eric, we both talked uh last night and neither of us heard anything.
How would you like to approach that? With, like, an email and call them, or do you wanna do that, I wonder?
Yeah, however you, you tell me.
This is for Pucky Mountain Round Caving?
Yeah.
And that they, that do maybe.
And at the intersection there. I believe so, yes.
Correct, yeah.
The last time I had talked to the actual appraisal guy, he was planning to bring in the crew on a Saturday. Uh but um, you know, that was over a month ago.
Yeah, I'm having the same thing with the painter of the Stiefel because they missed their window. Uh and now with other things are in there. So we're ending up being at the end of the season. So I would ask, you would follow up since you had some good contact with them initially and, and share with us uh what you hear, if we just, if there is a schedule.
Yeah, we'll do that and I'll send you an email. I don't even know what that is.
Alright, good.
Let's see, um okay, I, I, Dot, um I've joined Dot in the health officer role here in town as a deputy. And Dot has done all the things to apply for rep proper filing paperwork. I, in yesterday's mail, got a inch thick envelope with all kinds of stuff in there, including, did they send me toys or gifts?
Yes, you give a little badge.
Oh, okay. Well, there's something in there. I thought, what's this? So I, I got that. And uh it, it's just an observation, if I, if I may. Uh I noted that whatever discussion we had in the past about that ridge lung for the possible two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Uh I see that it's now being handled differently on the balance sheet. The balance is uh ninety thousand dollars. I just don't know whether the, the ten was in fact taken out of that asset and put somewhere else. So it's a question that should be asked with Melissa.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you say that, wouldn't you need a ten?
Well, and you know, it was a twenty year payout. And as of uh last December, when we were having our budget discussion back in December or late November, the, that the semi annual, the, the amount of ten and the interest that was due for six months on the older moment was paid. And at the time I said to, to uh the treasurer guy who was working closely with the other gentleman that was treasurer uh about the fact that it would seem to me that the balance should be going down now. Because we only are gonna have after that payment, maybe nine years of ten thousand dollars. And so I noticed in the financial statements that the balance of that asset for the bond repayment. Is now at uh ninety thousand dollars, whereas my prior tenure of two times on the slipboard and last year. That balance was at a hundred thousand dollars through that entire period.
So it's out here paying for this.
Could you, because we raised by taxes, we we.
Well, yes and no. It it it's was a, it was somewhere close to a two hundred thousand dollar. Bond. I looked at the paperwork this afternoon and the state approved a bond to us of three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. But the estimates didn't total that. I found one document where there was a cost of a hundred and sixty five. Uh, for part of the job and another hundred and twenty or twenty five for the other part of the job. So it was totaling two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The town had to come up with a percentage of that. The bottom line is we didn't use the full two hundred thousand dollars. We ended up with roughly a balance outstanding, because I understand it and I don't think I'm incorrect, of roughly a hundred thousand dollars. So the first ten years of that, we have to raise the ten thousand dollars that we used. But we now are at the point where we paid for what we used. And there's an asset balance of ten dollars of nine, was a hundred thousand dollars. From here on out, we don't have to raise or bill the citizens for that additional ten thousand dollars because it's already there in an asset account, just sitting there. Now, the other thing that's come up about it is whether or not we can use that money for things like. An excavator or roadwork, whatever, and I could not find this afternoon the paperwork to define that specifically. So it's somewhere else in his office.
Or something to.
Something to be researched.
Right, research. Excellent, excellent, alright.
Now, the question is. When we paid it, I I know, but but something needs to be looked at. Something needs to be looked at, then we gotta ask the question. And that is uh. Where did the, where did the ten thousand dollars that was in the hundred thousand dollars at the end of uh June go?
Yeah.
We already paid the payment last November.
Right.
It's not due until this coming November December. We gotta find out where that went. No, this is well after that. So that's all I have to offer.
Yeah, could I add that uh we were talking. Salt shed, salt tangent, uh, I just wanted to say I heard some information about Wordsboro. And maybe we could talk to them to. Feel there's need, but um, so the state, these blueprints that. The state uh puts out for these salt sand sheds, it's a. A model that they approved that they put out there with their specs and standards. And so when Brookline. Considered this uh salt sand shed. They downsized it, uh, I'd say like two thirds of the original two hundred blueprints. To to fit our account. Wordsboro's uh design, I believe, is exact same as Newpines, which is exact same as Townsend. Um. So Wordsboro was planning to. Uh, build, they don't have a salt shed or a sand shed.
At all.
Uh, they do have uh manmade um telephone poles with with uh pipes, like we have four salt. One of those salt pits in there. And their sand just was outside and they are close to the water stream. For river, so they qualified for this grant as well. The rumor I heard was. They were gonna uh start their structure. And their cost estimate is now at over nine hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Really?
And because of inflation and it sounds like they wanna do something different. So I don't know if it's. It'd be worth uh.
Uh, can I respond to that or something else at this time? That's that's amazing. Uh, what I encountered on the internet over the last twenty four hours was that we were being urged to. Uh, rebid our job. And start early next spring. I don't know if you read the email that I sent you, what you're gonna see in there is an email from you saying that. Uh, based on current pricing and what we talked about earlier, we were we were going to wait until. Early next spring and and reconsider it. They weren't weren't very happy about that. And I mean, and it was a very law. Rest, yeah, I I. So I don't, you know, so I basically held them off that day in terms of, I'd like to put it off, and I told them that we're gonna this November. Check with the Turner firm who did the bid for the monitoring of the materials and the work. And kind of get a feel from their revised estimate as whether prices are gonna are up, continuing up, and then we'll know whether or not we wanna proceed. Are they gonna, did they say they were gonna go ahead and not not do something like that?
No, they didn't. They didn't sell. I mean, I heard it said again, so.
I see.
Not sure. It didn't sound like, well, it didn't everybody.
Yes, in the budget that we went over with with the regional commission. Our work was in there, Newpines work was in there, Wordsboro was working there for the sand salt shed.
Okay.
So I I it's alive in whatever format it would. I'm sorry. Thank you for bringing that up. That's interesting.
Sure.
Alright, are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I don't have a report from the town clerk that keep putting it in here because I would. I hash practice was that he had time to report thanks to the select board. So we'll move on to I and D building commissioner report, Bruce.
Okay, oh my God, it's Tim Hart's done. I mean, excuse me, uh, and it's done.
The electric, it's not be clear.
So I hooked up these tests this one morning, should be open running with all Tim Hart, when Noah's done, he knows. That it was being done this week and he will come back down hopefully and. And give me a demonstration on how to use it. I'm thinking, if anybody that wants to be a part of this, fine. I'll let everybody know if you wanna be a part of the demonstration. I took the manual home this afternoon to take a look at it before anybody comes in. The building does this with Tim, I would have read it first. And then I'm also gonna ask if Stephanie and Erin or anybody else from the daycare want to go through this. Uh, because I don't want it all dumped on me that they don't know how to do it or they can't figure it out or anything like that. So I haven't really gotten that coordinated yet with Tim Hart, but that's the next step. The only other thing is that I had an issue with the water system where it appears that the sensor on the one side and side is broken. Uh, on the UV side it was working. It's on the horizontal rail of the public bike before the uh before the UV system itself. Uh, Mark and I have been working on it. I had line well come in early part of last week. They just happened to be coincidentally coming to town. First part of the last week, which is when I needed to have some filters. So he dropped off a box of filters, but it was in that process that previous weekend. And the prior week that they were running out of water and it turns out that I think we've got it resolved. Uh, but I won't know that until tomorrow. Right now, it's on the other side of UV system. Uh, the one that I wanted to wait till the end of September to strike up, but if that is working, it's been working for a day. So they're not under the bypass, they're under the UV system and the filters. Uh, but I have a feeling that I haven't resolved, Mark and I have been working together, that he hasn't gotten enough to do. He's gonna get that. But that, I believe, is. I was still going through, yeah, I think that's.
Okay, uh, select word report, sharing report, we've been short, um, things are moving, we're very, very busy, this is. A lot of work, um, but the health department's doing their job, the door, something's getting done. Uh, we communicated with um. Alta of the displeasure of the bad tire on the tractor or on the wheel desk to see if we get a response for that. And uh, I'll keep you all informed. Are there any other reports or discussions that the select would like to discuss at this time, Stan?
Briefly, when. Dot and I held a little conference with a health. Uh, issue over the weekend. Uh, as we were leaving, Guy had mentioned something about. What the town's responsibilities are regarding liquor licenses. So I'm wondering if it's something that. We could uh look at, just make general inquiry, whether it is E L C T, whoever, to see what what we. Need to do if anything. Maybe nothing, but I'd rather, I would feel comfortable and and it's something we live with as long as the select board's been in operation. I just don't know with this new business that we have, why don't you see it survive? Whether we need to do anything more to adjust upon.
Stan's referring to wedding venues. So we have several wedding venues in town and if they serve alcohol. Who is the responsible, who who is licensed to serve that alcohol? They're not selling it, they're giving it away, whatever. So Guy was asking about that and. We don't have.
AD accessibility.
That's got nothing to do with drinking alcohol. It's 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 just simply looking at to see whether or not we have any obligation, responsibility to regulate and monitor. If we are, and we if we are, and I'm just felt uncomfortable that someone brought it up that it's employed by the town. Asking, do we have any jurisdiction over that?
However.
Enter it, I.
I I gotta understand after, there's a lot of things that Guy might bring up that beyond what we do capacity and do as far as. We'll say rebates and 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 all sorts of stuff like that. So what would you suggest? You wanna pull the E L C T and everything or? Or I I will, I'd say, but we just put it on the agenda, but that would be.
We're in the fourth dial, we're really.
Okay, um. Any other? Communications, regular mail.
What were you tomorrow?
Hey.
Do you know?
Yeah, I was I was gonna be out of town tomorrow.
Okay.
I I don't know, this is a, this email's about.
Being found, right?
Okay.
Effort to provide outreach and education for our town, the city partners, Vermont Criminal Justice Council, the conjunction. Sending you this information regarding the responsibility when applying or supervising constable. We don't have constables, so I don't think we need to leave it. Okay, although I will read it in more detail.
I'll send you another part.
Okay.
Second piece of mail, uh, town at Brookline, abating, exterminating, uh, nice follow up. Okay, and third piece of mail, interesting one that I read earlier that came in, I'll read it, says the W C S U board is pleased to invite individuals interested in participating in the interviewing of our internal candidate for superintendent. So I guess that there are, uh, there's a superintendent change in in coming up. We asked that before you commit to participate, please review, so they're looking for a community member for the Newbrook School. To participate in the superintendent search.
Uh, so W C S U.
W C S U. It says the board's pleased to invite individuals to participate in the interviewing of our internal candidate for superintendent.